It took so long to realize that I can still live her last goodbye. Now all my days are filled with tears. Wish I could go back and change these years. I'm going through changes. It took so long to realize that I can still live her last goodbye. Now all my days are filled with tears. Wish I could go back and change these years. I'm going through changes.
Good afternoon, everyone. We'll call the March 12, 2019, meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council to order, and we'll do our pledge of allegiance. Call the robe, please, Ms. Clerk.
Councilmember Dominguez. Councilmember Rouse. Councilmember Sneddon. Mayor Protem Friedman. Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
And Mayor Maria.
Thanks so much. Here. We'll go to our ceremonial item, Madam Clerk.
Item number one, subject Arbor Day, March 12, 2019.
What a good group we have today for this. Today, March 12, is Arbor Day in the city of Santa Barbara. Whereas Arbor Day observances are held in California and in the city of Santa Barbara throughout the months of March and April, and whereas National Arbor Day is observed the last Friday of April, and whereas the city of Santa Barbara has been designated a Tree City USA for 39 years by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and whereas the city of Santa Barbara is proud of its more than 100 years of horticultural heritage and the health and diversity of its urban forest, and whereas the city of Santa Barbara maintains more than 60,000 open space park and street trees and recognizes the importance of professional tree care and annual tree planting programs to sustain a livable community, and whereas Santa Barbara Beautiful contributes to the health of the city's urban forests through support for the Street Tree Planting Program, and whereas the city of Santa Barbara and Santa Barbara Beautiful collaborate with local schools to plant trees and observance of Arbor Day. Now therefore, I, Kathy Maria, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby proclaim March 12, 2019, as Arbor Day in the city of Santa Barbara, and recognize the value these trees provide in enhancing the quality of our lives, and I'm very grateful to Santa Barbara Beautiful as well. Please say a few words.
So first of all, thank you for the honor. We are delighted that after four years of drought and lack of tree planting, that the tree planting program can begin again and that we can partner with you, which has been a major discussion in our group. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, folks. Mr. Casey, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We'll go to public comment, and public comment is our opportunity to hear from the public on items that are not on the agenda. And we can't answer your questions and get into too much of a discussion, so Holly is in the back of the room. She can make appointments with us or help you get to the right city staff person if you have questions and concerns. Thank you, Holly. Our first speaker will be Maddie White. And if I didn't say your name right, please correct me. You'll be followed by Terrell Armstrong, Phil Walker, Lee Muldaver. You have three minutes, and there's a counter right there on the...
Hello, thank you. My name is Maddie, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Westmont students who are here to observe. And we have spent, this is our spring break this week, and we've spent our spring break in the city just learning about Santa Barbara and understanding the ways in which it works. And we've walked around the different neighborhoods. We've experienced State Street, the neighborhood by the Mission, the West Side. We've gotten to hear from a lot of leaders in Santa Barbara. For example, yesterday, we were able to talk with Diane from Immigrant Hope. So people like that in the city who are just working in the neighborhoods. And we are seeking to understand how to answer the question, who are neighbors? And what is a neighborhood? And how does it work? What does it look like? And so, we're just happy to be here and get more, to know more of an understanding of how the city works today. And yeah, just wanted to thank you guys for allowing us to be here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Terrell, or Terrell Armstrong, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm also here with Westmont, with my friend Maddie and those in the back. And so, one of the things we've been learning about is a bit about the housing crisis and the, those experiencing homelessness on State Street and also in other areas. So, we'd just like to say, you know, thank you for the work that you're doing, keeping them in mind, and for, you know, planning and working through these tough issues of homelessness, especially with State Street, and wanting to preserve the tradition and the beauty of the city while also trying to keep in mind, you know, the value of those who are having real difficulties with having a roof to sleep under. So, yeah, we'd just like to thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, you're next. You'll be followed by Lee Muldaver, Anna Marie Gott, Rick Claussen.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm firmly behind Arbor Day since I did work for a tree company, Griffin Tree and Landscape, in the '70s. And this sticks in my mind always. The supervisor for my department said, "I want to see a deep hole. You have to go down and visit the Chinaman when you plant your tree." And there are so many trees still talking to a lot of people in the industry that need a little bit more help with, I call it, safety pruning. You gotta let the wind blow through the canopy of the tree, not let it be a sail that comes, you know, falls down on you or your property or passersby's on the sidewalk. And we're still in a windy situation here, and it's blowing pretty good today. One other quick thing, on the Quinientos Street Bridge, it's scheduled for demo and replacement pretty soon. And the southwest abutment where the Star Pine used to be, they could use some barrier, temporary barriers put up till lash construction gets a notice to proceed on the job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Muldaver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Lee Muldaver, local resident. I also want to take my hat off for Arbor Day and the partnership with the city, and also to our Westmont students. I think it's fantastic that they're taking part of their vacation to become more familiar with the city of Santa Barbara. And I'm sure as part of their studies, they realize that in many countries around the world, too many, the kind of freedom to walk around and ask questions and meet people and present themselves to local government on TV without fear of restraint or reprisal does not yet exist. And in that mode, I wanted to share some thoughts I had last week on, first Thursday, I had some extra minutes to do a deep dive into the concept of Vision Zero. And as you remember, a few weeks ago, you directed your transportation staff to come back with other options to make East Cabrillo Boulevard safer despite its history of serious vehicular accidents and fatalities. And I got to think, what are the options there? And the reason that I had this extra time to think was that about 4:25 last Thursday, I was in a 22-minute LA-style crawl from Garden and East Cabrillo Boulevard toward the Hilton. And all the streets and lanes and half of the sidewalks have been closed off to prep the way for a weekend of drag racing on Cabrillo Boulevard. So I think it's fantastic that the same city that's going all out to reduce vehicular accidents and fatalities in East Cabrillo Boulevard in the East Beach area also is finding the acumenical way to do this. And spending 22 minutes in LA-style bumper-to-bumper traffic trying to go seven blocks might ordinarily be a daunting experience, but that was really alleviated because at every corner for those seven blocks, the city administrator and half his staff, the police chief, all their traffic sergeants, the two top lieutenants, Rebecca Bjork, Rob Dayton, Derek Bailey, were all there wearing orange vests and stopping as people rolled down their windows and saying, "It's true that there's no signage. It's true that there's no detours posted. It's true that the contractors in the hotel have no one out there to help you. But we, as your city government, are taking time off Thursday afternoon to make sure that you can all reach the annual meeting of the visiting nurses and hospice safely and conveniently." And I found that really, really uplifting. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Muldaver. Ms. Gott, are these your handouts?
Yes.
Okay, so take one and pass it down.
I personally would have found that a terrible waste of tax dollars. In regards to the Westmont students here, one of the biggest things that are taking away housing are short-term vacation rentals. We've got about 800 illegal, illegal short-term vacation rentals in the city of Santa Barbara, and I can take them to apartment buildings that are filled with tourists on the weekends and where our residents used to live. With regards to this document, I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about kind of obligations. When you sign up for a credit card, you get a bill every month, right? You get a bill, and if you don't pay that bill, there is a consequence. Your consequence is you're going to pay an extra fee. Sometimes, if you have a driver's license that is going to become expired, you get a notice. And once that notice is actually ends, which is basically your birth date, your driver's license isn't valid anymore. So when you go through and get a modification, here in the city of Santa Barbara, we have ordinances. And you get a little piece of paper, right here, like this, on the backside, and it gives you some little warnings. It says in number five, "The location size design of the construction proposed in the application for a building permit shall not deviate from the location, size, and design of a construction approved in this modification." So it means it must be exactly the same. You can't reduce it. You can't make it bigger. You can't put it somewhere else. It's the same space. You have resolution fees that you pass once a year, and they are good for a year. So if you actually needed to get your modification extended, there is a fee to do that. There is a process to do that. The staff hearing officer would actually set up an appointment for you to come in front of them. You would ask for your time extension. They would typically grant it, and then you would have extra time to get your building permit. That is a process. That is a policy. It is an ordinance. And it's actually spelled out right here on this little piece of paper that you receive when you go through and you get a modification. There isn't anybody else that can change it. The HLC cannot change your staff hearing officer modification. Your ABR cannot change your staff hearing modification. You are responsible, and the city will not give you another notice. Thank you very much for listening.
Mr. Claussen, you're next. You'll be followed by Shelby Messner, Lanny Evenstein, and our final speaker will be Ed St. George. Go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council, Mr. Casey, Mr. Cologne. I'd like to continue and clarify comments that I made last Tuesday regarding Santa Barbara's long and well-documented investment in its architectural heritage and ambiance. California has an all-too-real housing shortage, but it was not caused by towns and smaller cities protecting their historic resources. We are too few and too small to wield a major impact. We're caught in the wide net of the 2017 legislative housing package and the expected passage this year of SB 50. We certainly are not alone among cities in our dilemma. The predicament may be most acute for older coastal cities like ours. Because we border the ocean, we have traditionally been attractive to early settlers and to visitors ever since. We have histories of early Mexican settlement and continuous habitation with built environments. We have historic structures of special character and interest, precisely the sort addressed in the California Government Code, which I offered to you last week. And we are restricted on our immovable beachside border from development, which can concentrate growth pressure on our historic center cores and neighborhoods. Specifically, I can list the cities of Santa Cruz, Monterey, Carmel, San Juan Capistrano, San Clemente, La Jolla, and Coronado that may face comparable problems. It's no surprise that they have Hispanic names. Several have Spanish missions. For each of us, the disruption of long-established neighborhoods with forced, inappropriate housing cannot be undone. Incompatible buildings cannot be unbuilt. I encourage the appropriate offices of the city government to invite and share ideas with these and other similar cities about reasonable measures to provide affordable housing without sacrificing heritage. The contrast is stark. There is a 60-year-old statewide legislative precedent for protecting historic buildings and neighborhoods. There is a two-year-old legislative effort to solve the housing shortage. This will not be the first time a legislature has created a regulatory conflict and required local agencies to sort it out. I believe our approach cannot be with resignation where, if the Senate will not pass it or the president will veto it, then why should we work on it? For all the Sacramento bluster, the implied state mandate to build in city centers may not be inevitable. Smart preservation of the Santa Barbara that we have today is what citizens expect of our government. Please reach out to those other cities, start or continue those conversations. Thank you.
Shelby Messner?
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name's Shelby Messner. I'm a project planner here in Santa Barbara at On Design Architects, and I'm here today to discuss the housing issue in Santa Barbara and some possible solutions. Santa Barbara has a world-renowned reputation for being a beautiful destination-location spot, though locally, we as a community are lacking direction and vision, and we need a clear path forward to bring an identity back to our city. The average unit density incentive program was a really great idea, but it's not really working as well as it could be. Two main issues that we see with the AUD program are the minimal parking requirement and the locations in which AUD projects are currently permitted to be built. The AUD incentives allow a reduction in required parking to one parking space per unit. Unfortunately, given the locations the AUD units are allowed, this really doesn't work. Residents living in AUD units are not going to get rid of their car just because they only have one parking space, and they're going to continue to use their vehicles to drive to work, go do their errands, et cetera. And this is only going to result in an increased traffic congestion because their homes are located away from all of these amenities. The permitted locations for AUDs are all outside of the downtown area, which is where we need it the most. People want to live downtown adjacent to restaurants, work, gyms, items like that, different amenities, so that they can easily walk from their house to their destination spot. We need to take a good look at the AUD program and precisely pinpoint exactly the appropriate locations for AUD units to be built. Providing housing density downtown is going to help revitalize State Street and bring a new energy to downtown. And speaking as a young, working professional, I know firsthand how hard it is to find a place to live downtown that would let me walk around, not need my car, and be close to all these different amenities. My office proposed a housing project a while ago in an existing apartment complex next to Santa Barbara City College that would have increased the density, existing density, by 650 additional bed spaces. This would have freed up countless single-family homes on the mesa and the Lower West Side, which are currently taken over with student housing. Students and young people thrive when they're living together in the same areas. There's no need for four or five students to be sharing a single-family home together in a quiet neighborhood. They could be living in an apartment in a complex that's designed for them where they're surrounded by other students. Increasing density in locations like this would allow students to live together and walk to school with no additional traffic congestion or impacts like that. In addition, locating housing directly downtown will bring a new demand for enhanced transit programs, which do not currently exist. If we bring people downtown, there will be a direct need for more transit.
Your time's up.
All right.
Finish your sentence. Go ahead.
More transit downtown will flourish. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I have a question.
A question? You have a question for the speaker?
Yes.
Ms. Messner, this is Councilmember Dominguez.
Regarding the downtown concept, and it was in front of council last February, and so it's working through the system. In fact, it may have been at Planning Commission Thursday. I'm not sure if the downtown, that's the next phase?
That wasn't their focus.
Okay.
No.
So apparently, I was off. But it was here over a year ago, and it got pushed back for a lot of reasons probably aren't worth discussing today. But in regards to your statement about parking in downtown, what can you tell us about the parking in downtown? If we build downtown, are you suggesting we need more parking or different parking?
Well, from our experience with some of the AUD projects that we've built, our workforce style housing, the reduced parking requirement, isn't really working for us. Our workforce, you know, residents who are living there are people who are gardeners, they're contractors, they have cars, they need their car at their home, they're big. They need parking. We would support an in-loof fee of like $25,000 that could go towards transportation if a project wanted to propose reduced parking. But in general, for us, it's not, not really working that well.
Great, and I appreciate that you acknowledged what a previous speaker talked about, the historic nature of our city being kind of the core. So thank you for acknowledging that.
Thank you.
Stay involved. Thank you. Mr. Evenstein, you're next. You'll be followed by Ed St. George. You have three minutes.
Mayor Maria, members of the council, thank you for your service to our community. Councilmember Harmon, welcome to the City Council. I'd heard that Ed St. George was going to be here today, and I wanted to talk a little bit about housing, and I've had the opportunity to talk with some of you about this issue. I really feel that the city missed an opportunity several years ago when the opportunity for expansion of privately funded housing adjacent to Santa Barbara City College came forward. I thought this was an outstanding proposal for the city of Santa Barbara for a lot of reasons. One, it addresses the housing crisis in our area. Two, it puts more students immediately adjacent to the community college they attend, and I think that's really important. I think that we are, in large part, a college town there. Forty thousand students between UCSB and Santa Barbara City College, and I think that the best way to accommodate our student populations is have them as close to their campuses as possible. That gives them lots of opportunities. And it also, by creating more housing units immediately adjacent to Santa Barbara City College, then means that there are fewer community college students who are out in the general community, either on the mesa or on the west side or elsewhere, and I think that that limits other issues in the community. So I think that, both from the perspectives of what it does for the community college students and for Santa Barbara City College, as well as what it does for the larger community, I think it's really positive. And I think, too, that although it may not be directly creating new apartment units on the Lower East Side and Lower West Side, the fact is, is that there are students who currently live on the Lower East Side, Lower West Side, who then would be living closer to campus, so it actually does indirectly create housing everywhere. So that, and from an environmental standpoint, I think that the idea of more students living closer to campus is the most positive way forward. I think, too, that some of the proposals for ideas that Mr. St. George has proposed in terms of a roundabout at Cliff Drive and Loma Alta, and also at the western entrance to Santa Barbara City College, and reconfiguring the entrance to Santa Barbara City College, creating a new transit center there, all on the City College side of Cliff Drive. These are proposals that would really improve the city and Santa Barbara City College, and I hope that if this opportunity emerges again in the future, which I hope that it does, that the city will work closely with the project in order to see that it comes to fruition. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Okay. Mr. St. George? And he's the final speaker unless someone else wants to bring a slip up. Feeling generous today. Last chance. Okay. Thank you.
Hello. I wasn't going to speak today because Lanny and Shelby were here speaking, but I did want to hear them. And I'm happy that I can't give my time away. That's a great thing you did for yourselves, quite frankly. But I do want to say, because I heard somebody talk about students, and I just, in my opinion, Santa Barbara's always been an educational center, as far as I'm concerned. And what these students are, are more than just students attending City College here. I don't know how many people in this room, or how many people are sitting in front of me right now, came to Santa Barbara to go to UCSB or City College or Westmont and decided to stay. We need students. Students are the perfect tourist. We have, what Lanny was saying, we have about 30,000 full-time tourists right now, where their parents are making money somewhere else, sending the money back here to Santa Barbara for them to spend. They work in our restaurants, they work in our hospitals, they work in our retail stores. Providing housing for students is important, but that's not what I want to talk about. I really want to talk about how important City College is. We've got this golden goose out there that it's not being, in my opinion, it's not being recognized for what the value is it really brings to our community. Every one of these students, when they go back home, even if they're only here for three or four years, they become ambassadors for the city of Santa Barbara, the awesome time they had living here. They go back, they tell their families, their mother, their father, their grandfathers, and then in turn, those people want to come back here and visit. But we also need something for Santa Barbara, because I don't believe we have an identity anymore. When I was growing up in Santa Barbara, we had a lot of things to do. Right now, people come to Santa Barbara for two, three days, what do you do? What is Santa Barbara? You have to ask yourself right now, what do we do in Santa Barbara? You come here, you relax, you go to dinner, you walk around, that's it. We have an amazing amount of opportunities. We have bike trails, hiking trails, we have oceans. I think we really need to capitalize and push on this for our tourism. I really do. And we may not need so much tourism as we really think from out of town if we increase the amount of students we have. Once again... Once again, they are the best tourists we can possibly get. They're here. They're not bringing traffic up on Friday and then going back home Sunday night. Anyways, that's just my thumb for the kids. Santa Barbara City College, great opportunity we have, work with them. I hope we can more in the future, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. St. George. Thank you. Oh, a question? Mr. St. George, come on back.
Yes.
You have, you have several housing projects throughout the region. What is your take on AUD?
I'm not sure that's an appropriate question. Well, go ahead, just, and we don't need to have a big conversation about AUD, but we need to have some discipline, Mr. Dominguez.
I'm not sure what you mean by discipline. I've asked him a question. He's a housing expert. We have an AUD program that's failing. We've had several speakers about it.
That wasn't the topic he was bringing up exactly, so.
Can I answer that, though?
Yes, please.
My experience with AUD, I was encouraged with it in the beginning. I was very excited about it, but it's not working as we intended. Once again, I think this is something we need to be precision with, precisely exactly where we need the housing, and I think the housing needs to be purpose-built. Just infill projects, one here, one over there, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Downtown is, we need to bring downtown back alive. Once again, young people, it's, it would work. Our AUDs that we have, our workforce housing, as Shelby was mentioning, these people all drive trucks. They need their trucks. These are the gardeners, these are the plasters, these are the roofers. Eliminating parking is, hasn't really helped them. In fact, we normally, those type of people, we have an expression, our Hispanic family housing that we have, they don't hang their wall, the pictures on their walls, they screw them to the walls, because they're there for 15, 20 years. That's not happening right now. On the AUD projects we're building, we're having a real high turnover.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. St. George. As someone who lives and works in the city, I appreciate your opinion.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Dominguez.
That closes public comment. Thank you, everybody. We'll go to the consent calendar. Are there items to read, Ms. Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item number two, subject: Adoption of Ordinance for the Lease and Operation of a Visitor Information Center at 120 State Street. Recommendation that council adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the Community Development Director to execute a 10-year lease agreement with four 10-year options between the City of Santa Barbara and 35 State Street Hotel Partners LLC, a sublease between the City and Visit Santa Barbara, and the Second Amendment to the Owner Participation Agreement dated April 13, 2004 pertaining to the lease of a 1,184-square-foot tenant space at 120 State Street to be used as a visitor information center and public restrooms within the Hotel California Development. Item number three, subject: Resolution approving the application for $500,000 in grant funds for the California River Parkway's Grant Program for the Arroyo Borough Creek Restoration at Pull Murrow Drive Property Acquisition. Recommendation that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the application for $500,000 in grant funds for the California River Parkway's Grant Program for the Arroyo Borough Creek Restoration at Pull Murrow Drive Property Acquisition.
Okay. If there's no further objection, we'll waive further reading, and I'll entertain a motion to move the consent calendar forward. That was Dominguez Rouse. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we'll go to a report from the Finance Committee. Did you all meet today?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We met and we unanimously approved a recommendation to bring the Mills Act to the council for some improvements. The Mills Act is a state law that incentivizes preserving historic resources, and it's great because it's a public-private partnership, so it increases the pie, so to speak. And we've had great success over the past several years, so this allows us a little more flexibility and encourages more residents or commercial buildings to be brought into the program.
Very good. We'll go to item five, please. Ms. Clerk.
Item number five, subject: Presentation from Visit Santa Barbara.
Ms. Janega Dykes, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Kathy Janega Dykes. I'm president and CEO of Visit Santa Barbara, and I'm pleased to be here today to provide an update on our tourism industry. And I certainly know that you have a lot of important issues related to the community, but I thank you so much for your ongoing dedication and support of the travel industry here in Santa Barbara. And my presentation today includes a recap of our 2018 initiatives and also looking forward into 2019 and beyond. But I'd like to set the tone with a preview of our newest 30-second commercial. You're the first public audience to view this fresh work of art, so let's take a look.
In some places, beauty is an encore. Here, on this graceful crescent of coast, it's only the beginning. You see, there's beautiful, and there's Santa Barbara.
So I've seen that video many times, and every time I see it, I feel very privileged and honored to represent this destination, as I'm sure all of you are as well. And can you believe that that footage was actually captured this past January, when we probably had one of our wettest and coldest months ever? I'm going to give you more contacts on our new advertising campaign in just a moment. However, although I under, I know that you understand the role of destination marketing organizations such as Visit Santa Barbara, many of our constituents do not. So we often ask our visitors or our guests, where do you like to travel? So for example, what is on your bucket list? And you don't have to say it out loud, but think of a, of a place that you've always wished that you could travel. And when we conduct this exercise in less formal settings, the answer is always the same. I bet you named either a country, or a region, or a city, because rarely does anyone ever mention a restaurant, or a hotel, or maybe even a tour. So it's really the responsibility of Visit Santa Barbara to ensure that people, our visitors, are answering that question with Santa Barbara. So we are a private, nonprofit corporation that pools the resources of four destinations, financial resources, and that includes Santa Barbara, Montecito, Summerlin, and also Galita as well, too. And the resulting travel generates revenue, tax dollars, and certainly supports jobs for our local residents and businesses. Our funding is made up of a number of different sources. It includes the assessment that's paid by our visitors when they stay at area hotels, again, in the unincorporated areas of the South County, Santa Barbara, and also Galita. And that amounts to about $4 million currently. That accounts for about 70% of our total funding. The City of Santa Barbara's investment, which we are so grateful and really sets the foundation, it amounts to about, close to $1.5 million. And as you can see on the graph, we also get a small amount of funding from the county, and then the rest of the funding is generated from our membership and co-op programs as well. It's important to note that all of this money is then reinvested in marketing our community. Now, I'm going to walk you through some of the top-line highlights of the return on investment of our work. I'm not going to go through every single detail of our marketing plan, because I'd be here for hours, but I'd like to highlight a few of the key metrics we track that are on this screen that are directly influenced by my team's work. And that means millions in meetings business, thousands of group room nights that are sold, and the broad global reach through earned media coverage, paid advertising, and our digital platforms, and certainly our content channels as well. When it comes to hotel performance for the City of Santa Barbara, I don't need to tell you, 2018 was as challenging a year as we've ever experienced. Capacity in our hotels grew slightly, about 2%, and that represents really Hotel California and an additional wing with Harbor View in. But the demand fell by 1%, causing the average hotel to experience about a 3% loss in occupancy. Notably, the rates charged grew by 2%, and remarkably, the hotel revenue and taxes collected were even slightly positive despite the aftermath of the 1-9 debris flow and Thomas fire. So this is certainly below our long-term goals, but I'm really pleased to report the economic damage wasn't nearly as bad as it could have been, given the circumstances. So looking forward into the remainder of 2019, we're going to see some regional hotel capacity grow significantly. Certainly, the Rosewood Miramar Beach just opened on March 1st. We have a Hyatt Place that's opening up on Upper State Street. The Four Seasons Biltmore is gonna, we have about five months of operations in the San Yucatan Ranch. We'll see about six months of operations in 2019. Note that all of this expanded capacity really serves the luxury market. Although most of the growth, in fact, all of this, will be outside the City of Santa Barbara, the City of Santa Barbara will benefit from this growth. These are the visitors that will come into our community and spend money in our restaurants and also on our attractions and our retail shops as well. So it's important that we continue to market them. So this year, we saw some unprecedented award recognition. Our destination really caught the attention of the country, and Santa Barbara is really high on our travelers' radar as a result. And this is in no small, due to no small part of our public relations program, our community received several major travel awards and accolades recently. And as I've said to representatives of some of these publications, while it's important for Visit Santa Barbara to be acknowledged, or Santa Barbara to be acknowledged in this way, because it does attract future travelers, I think it's more important for us as a community to, to also be recognized. We know what a beautiful community that we represent, and now others do as well, too. So as you can see, we were recognized by the likes of New York Times, Conde Nast, Travel and Leisure, Forbes, and others. So pretty unprecedented, unprecedented acknowledgements. Of course, we can't rely just on the kindness of the travel editors, so we are heavily investing in a brand-new campaign, and it's titled "The Santa Barbara Effect." And it really positions Santa Barbara as the quintessential California, and is emotionally compelling with an approachable, authentic voice that broadens the Santa Barbara invitation. Campaigns such as these are really designed and crafted to target our strongest markets with this emotionally-driven message, and one that you saw certainly in the video. And that particular video will be broadcast on connected TVs, YouTube, and also video advertising channels. We focus on five different pillars here, as you can see, which include arts and culture, food and libations, lifestyle, and luxury, and outdoor recreation. So these passion pillars are really the centerpiece of our integrated advertising campaign, which also includes print advertising, digital banner ads, and social media posts, and even our website. So while we're most known as certainly a destination marketing organization, crisis communication became one of our priorities last year. And our biggest challenge after the Thomas fire and the 1-9 debris flows, how to strike that delicate balance of demonstrating support for unprecedented tragedy while communicating that area hotels, restaurants, and attractions in the City of Santa Barbara was open for business. So we served as the voice of our community for our traveling public, our media, and the travel professionals in this time of crisis. Last year, I came before you to ask for increased support to help our local travel industry recover, and I'd like now to show you the results of two major initiatives we launched in partnership with the City of Santa Barbara, and very much thanks to your support. So the first was an innovative consumer campaign we ran in LA in partnership with Amtrak, who's really become a very important partner for us. So let's take a look.
Santa Barbara is a place unlike any other. Nestled on the central California coast, the American Riviera embodies coastal relaxation, where the pace of life feels slower, and the people take the time to welcome you. In a fast-paced, high-energy city like Los Angeles, we wanted to bring a little bit of Santa Barbara's charm and hospitality to Union Station, where a friendly hello can make someone's day. Instead of telling people about the American Riviera, we brought it to them. We worked together to create an experiential event in Los Angeles that embodied the warm spirit of Santa Barbara. What better way to illustrate this charm than through an augmented reality setup, prizes and giveaways in the middle of a busy LA hub? We shared a glimpse of the beautifully crafted Spanish mission-style courthouse through cutting-edge technology, placing your phone over a coded card that unveiled a 3D rendering of this iconic landmark, plus an immersive green screen that set you inside a classic Santa Barbara scene. We surprised lucky winners with a short 90-mile train ride to paradise on a premium Pacific Surfliner car, which included augmented reality showing sneak peeks of Santa Barbara passing by train windows. We gave out a taste of the vibrant wine scene, along with special golden ticket prizes for other Santa Barbara specialties, and most of all, stopped and shared a hello from the American Riviera. The campaign, supported with a contest, radio coverage, and social media advertising, garnered incredible results through innovative technology and a warm welcome. Visit Santa Barbara sprinkled samples of the American Riviera across LA, teasing the warmth and charm for anyone in need of a perfect coastal getaway.
Fun, huh? Let's see. So as noted in the recap, we generated 143,000 media impressions, 5,300 in-person interactions during the course of those two days, and 2.5 million total impressions. So it was an incredible opportunity to collaborate with our partners throughout Santa Barbara and welcome visitors back to the area. And all in all, as you saw, it was a combination of using cutting-edge technologies such as augmented reality, coupled with interpersonal relationships, talking with people, talking to them about the reasons to come to Santa Barbara, as well as inviting them to join us on the train back to Santa Barbara, too. So the second activation was a one-of-a-kind travel pop-up shop in Glendale last November. Let's take a look. So in response to the one-time grant that you provided us for disaster recovery, this social media activation was held as a multi-jurisdiction partnership at your request with the Galita Chamber of Commerce, Visit Santa Maria Valley, and Visit San Ynez Valley. And also, as the video showed, our pop-up store inside the Americana brand, which is located in Glendale, was packed with shoppers that we invited to visit Santa Barbara County. This activation garnered over 31,000 social engagements, as well as 1.1 million paid and earned social impressions, not to mention the 4,000 in-store customers as well. So on behalf of our organization, our hospitality industry, I want to thank you for believing in our work and certainly supporting us during one of our most challenging years. So as we're looking ahead, as referenced earlier, excited to update you on our vision for the newest visitor center that will be coming into Lower State Street. Once this lease is officially approved, Visit Santa Barbara will build out a beautifully beautiful branded welcome center across from Moxie. And as previously mentioned, this, our aim is to elevate our brand and deliver this very compelling story through the space. Not only do we want to capture our visitors there, we want to tell them about what to see and do, we want to encourage day visitors to overnight, overnight visitors, and then, most importantly, encouraging them to come back. So, we're going to design a space that really represents the beauty and sophistication of Santa Barbara with the functionality of a modern, high-traffic information center, and create this very experiential environment that draws not only our visitors, but we also want to appeal to our local residents as well, too. And during these personal experiences that we'll have with our visitors, we want to capture their visitor information so that we can continue to market them again. So, I'm pleased to announce that our organization will be working with the Chamber of Commerce, and we will be contracting their visitor information staff to actually operate the center. And they already have a very experienced and well-motivated volunteer base. They will continue to operate the Visitor Information Center on Garden State, which will capture those visitors that are walking along the waterfront, and also a lot of the bus tours that are driving to the area as well, too. So, when it comes to Visit Santa Barbara's long-term vision, our next three to five years will be guided by a fresh, new strategic plan. So, every strategic plan begins with research to set the foundational priorities. So, elected and also non-elected leaders from the city of Santa Barbara, as well as all of our stakeholders, were invited to participate in a survey. So, the next step is our board and staff are working together to identify a short list of the most critical goals for the years ahead in order to build the roadmap to guide us there. So, this roadmap is going to ensure we collectively remain focused on the highest priorities of our industry, and certainly our community as well, too. And then, another milestone on the horizon will be the renewal of our Tourism Business Improvement District, which we hope to be able to renew by the end of the year. This will ensure the stability and viability of our long-term planning and position us for continued success. So, the approval will be neat, will begin the official petition process of the lodging business owners later this spring, and then we will come before you for approval of the petition by the city of Santa Barbara, city of GLEDA, and also Santa Barbara County, because this is a South Coast Tourism Business Improvement District. So, finally, I want to wrap up with a reminder of why this all matters, and now, those are the numbers at our screen. We take our mission seriously because we know that our success is critical to our community. Our work is not just a vanity project, we're here to strengthen the economy. When we succeed, millions of visitors experience our destination, billions of dollars move in the economy, and 13,000 of the hardest-working employees are supported by our hospitality industry. So, I thank you for helping us keep this vital economic engine running smoothly. Thank you.
Thanks, and you gave us a packet.
You have a packet that includes all the slides, a brand-new visitors' guide, as well as a little brochure that provides you with the economic impact of the tourism industry to our area.
We have some questions for you.
Please.
Ms. Harmon, go ahead first.
Yes, thank you so much. That was so impressive. I just had a question. Do you guys have a mechanism for following these social media engagements to see whether they convert into actual visits? And barring that, if you could speak to the industry expectation in connection with whether a like or an Instagram post actually will then become a tangible tourist visit?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Harmon, our digital marketing strategy is quite robust in our, in our organization. Not only do we have staff that is dedicated, we actually have a social media agency that's based out of Portland that helps guide our strategy. So, we put together an editorial calendar for the year, and then being able to promote all of the various businesses throughout the year, too. We also invite influencers, and we just had a group of influencers that were in community, in our community as well, to help share the positive message about Santa Barbara. In terms of engagement, certainly the likes matter, but the engagement with our social media posts are even more critical. So, that's why it's so important that we rely on this kind of long-term strategy as well, too. It's difficult to be able to measure the ROI on the social media posts, but we can certainly tell about how well our programs are working through the engagement of our campaigns as well.
Mr. Dominguez.
I really appreciated hearing all these highlights and achievement. It's just been spectacular work that you guys have been doing, particularly given the disasters. I thought it was great the way you were seamlessly able to get all these videos on our screen. We often time have troubles with our speakers, so it was just as substantively and stylistically impressive. So, thank you for doing the great work and keep up the great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It was, it was really insightful. And I have a question here. On one of your slides, it said film productions, 184 production days. Is that, is that specifically just films, or is that television, photography, commercial?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gutierrez, that is a combination of production. I think when you look at production here in Santa Barbara County, I would say the largest percentage of productions that we see are photo shoots. We see also a lot of commercials, particularly up in the valley, that are using some of the roads as well, too. Some independent films, and then, reality shows are also really popular in this area as well.
Okay. And at a previous event that you had a few months ago, you were going over where the tourists are mainly from that visit Santa Barbara. From what I remember, the majority were from Asia, is that correct?
The largest percentage of our domestic visitors are from Southern California. So, the largest percentage of our international visitors come from Canada and also Europe. We are focusing, one of our opportunity markets right now are both China as well as India, and those are two markets that we are focusing on.
Okay. That's good to know. Do you, does your organization go out to these different countries and try to spread the word of visiting Santa Barbara?
We do. We have a pretty robust international strategy. We contract with representation actually based out of the U.K., so we have a team there that is representing Santa Barbara. We partner with Visit California, which is the statewide tourism marketing organization, and participate in a number of their international sales missions. And those missions primarily go to, you know, U.K., Germany. I had staff that was at a luxury travel show in France in December, will be going back to China as well, too. So, we're actually in-market, but we're not in-market by ourselves. We are there with, in collaboration with California as well, too. Because I think when you look at our international strategy, we are working with our colleagues up and down the coast. Now, as much as we want them to visit Santa Barbara for seven to 10 days, we, we know the reality is that they also want to visit Los Angeles or Orange County. So, we'll partner with these various destinations and encourage them to spend some time in Santa Barbara.
That's great. My only suggestion was, would be to reach out to the foreign film markets and try to get them to produce films in Santa Barbara, because some of these films have really high production budgets, and it would be great to have them here.
Interesting enough, we just actually, about three or four months ago, had a team of producers from India who were interested in making some Bollywood films here in California as well, too. So, Santa Barbara was one of their stops.
Nice. Good to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Friedman.
First, thank you for all the great work you've done in response to the disaster. The follow-up, I wanted to ask you, have you, with the work that you did during the meeting that we, that we both attended, myself and a few of our council members, you mentioned that there's a certain timeframe with a disaster where after you get certain points, initially, there's, you know, worldwide attention we had, and it kind of dissipates over time. But the efforts over the last year, how have you seen the images of Santa Barbara that were negative coming out of the disaster, and we've worked to rebuild our brand from that? Have you seen any significant changes in that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, I think the accolades that we've seen some, from some of these impressive media outlets, kind of speak to that. You're absolutely right. The first quarter, even first half of last year, all we saw were kind of negative impressions of Santa Barbara really focusing on the disaster. We no longer talk about the disaster, we're moving forward, and again, are very grateful to, you know, Afar Magazine or New York Times for showcasing Santa Barbara as one of the places to visit in 2019. So, we were able to change that conversation toward the end of the year. It took a long time.
Great, that's great, great news to hear. And I just also want to comment that when you were able to, you showed the video of the mission magically appearing behind a phone, you made me feel really old. Like, I thought, thought it was some faraway science fiction in the future of 2020 or something, but that's only like eight months away. So, I'm glad we have some millennials on here who can help me wade through those issues in the future. But I just want to say it's, what you showed is very innovative, and it was really great to see the work that was, was done out of it. And if I didn't live here, I would visit here.
Well said.
We're all very lucky.
I'll just ask real quick if we're still a good wedding destination. I know people like to get married in Hawaii, right? But I thought we were competing with them, is that right?
Madam Mayor, yes. Santa Barbara continues to be a very popular year-round wedding destination. Not only do we have the outdoor facilities, the parks and beaches that are available for weddings, but certainly many of our resorts and are really seriously going after that business, too. So, the wedding business for Santa Barbara is quite different than other destinations, because here, we attract the destination weddings, which is important. It's three days or five days where you have people coming out from all over, not only from the U.S., but often hosting people from outside the area as well, too, and attracting visitors from across the globe.
Okay. And I see one of your staff members who was in the Union Station. What's her name?
Her name is Carly Bates, and she is our marketing associate, and very talented, and very lucky to have a very talented team with Visit Santa Barbara.
Ms. Bates, thanks for your contribution, too. That was fun to see you in the, in the video. That's it? We're just receiving this report. Thank you for all your hard work, and we'll send you off to go do more good work, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks. We'll close that item, and we'll switch gears a little bit to our Public Works Department and their capital improvement program, trying to make Santa Barbara look good for our visitors and our locals. Ms. Clerk, will you read the item, please?
Item number six, subject: Five-Year Capital Improvement Program for Fiscal Years 2020 through 2024.
Thanks. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Bjork.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Excuse me. I'm Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director, and I'm here today to present counsel with the assessment of proposed and unfunded vital infrastructure needs and for council's acceptance of the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 2020 to 2024. And when I say proposed and unfunded, I mean proposed for funding and those that we don't believe there is adequate resource to fund. I want to start with a video of what is a capital project, and I just have to say, I don't think this counted towards the production days, and it sort of highlights why an agency like Visit Santa Barbara is so important, because we build bridges well, but we may not be quite so slick on the videos. So, this is a video of the Annapamoo Bridge reconstruction project. This was a federally funded project at 84-ish percent. We pay about 11% of this. The federal funding has built many of our bridges in the city. Many of our bridges are more or less invisible, and they are all right about 100 years old. So, this is a really important part of the work that we do. A capital project is generally defined as an active activity that creates, improves, replaces, repairs, or maintains a fixed asset with a total cost inventory of $100,000 or greater, with a life expectancy of five years or more. I want to point out that for our capital improvement program, we also include some one-time expenses for studies or plans. This is largely a function of how we use the capital improvement program in prioritizing our capital budget and our budgeting exercise. These large expenditures are otherwise difficult to fit into our budget, so having them identified and compete for the one-time funding we use for capital is a good way to fit them in. Some examples of the plans are the wildfire protection plan that you'll be hearing about in a minute, the airport-specific plan, and the Parks and Recreation Facilities Master Plan are all examples of plans you might see in the CIP. The goals of the CIP are to-
That was very cool, Ms. Bjork.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The goals of the CIP are to provide a planning document for capital improvement, including appropriate supporting information to, for the necessity of the project for such improvements, and to sort of lay that out over a five-year planning framework. Historically, we've brought you a six-year plan, but we were struggling with that sixth year, because that was sort of everything beyond five years. So, we're now bringing a five-year plan that includes a future needs column in where we would historically have had the sixth year. And the idea there is that's other things that we know are coming up and will be needed, or we would like to do now, but we recognize they're not as high priority, and therefore, we put them in those future needs column. In an event of something like a water main program where we fend it annually, that sixth year represents an annual contribution, because of course, it would be a huge number if we took it forward 100 years or something. So, it's just our annual ongoing need. We try to identify the unmet capital needs. This is very helpful for us explaining to the community why we aren't able to do everything that we would like to, there's just an issue of resources. And we provide a plan for priority capital improvements, which can be used in preparing the capital budget for the coming budget cycle. This plan is also very helpful to us in securing grant funding, because the granting agencies like to see that it's a well-thought-out project that the community has endorsed, and having a council endorsement and acceptance of this plan adds a lot of weight to our grant applications. So, we get a lot of questions about prioritization. Why don't you prioritize your capital improvement program? And it's difficult to explain, but because this is a CIP for the entire city, we have lots of different funding pots and lots of different types of priorities. So, you might have a project at the library and at Parks and Recreation that are both very, very high priority. It's hard to rank them. Additionally, some of the revenues that we would use are restricted, so something that might otherwise be lower priority may have a funding source available that makes it able to be done. So, and then the last thing is that a grant opportunity might come along for a mid-priority project, but it fits perfectly and gives us an opportunity to get it done. So, all of those make it difficult to do a strict priority, one, two, three, for our CIP, but we do try and put those highest priority projects and those projects we're most ready to go forward with in the first two years of the plan, which recognizes that they are ready for funding if there's funding available. The criteria that help us inform which are the highest priority are safety, existing needs, we try to make, keep up what we have before we build more assets that need to be maintained, but then sometimes there are new demands that need to be met. The plans are incorporate council and board input, and then also respond to other agencies, like some of our regulatory agencies that may be driving some of the work we're doing. And then, of course, funding is very important to our prioritization if there's available funding, or if restricted funding is available. So, speaking of funding, our funding sources, we have a number of funding sources for the capital work. The general fund, which is general tax revenue, is one, and that includes Measure C. Enterprise funds, water, wastewater, airport, and waterfront are all enterprise funds and have restricted use of those funds. They can only be used to support those enterprises. Internal service funds are funds that, where one department is paying for a program such as fleet, facilities, or information technology, and those funds are managed as a separate pot. Designated funds are special-purpose taxes like Measure A, which is a county-wide sales tax that helps support streets, or Measure B are creeks and water quality, TOT tax. Grants, we have been very successful in grants over a number of different programs, and debt issuance or loans. And debt issuance and loans are very useful where you have a project that, whose benefit will serve future generations or future ratepayers, because you want them to also help participate in the cost of that project. in the cost of that project. So for something like the police station building that we're working on, that would be a great opportunity to debt fund that, and in fact, we are proposing to debt fund that. So in the CIP that you're looking at, we have proposed, we've identified 463 million in projects that are proposed for funding. The $334 million slice is those more restricted funds, and then the 129 is the general fund money, and that includes Measure C. Comes out to just about 25 million a year. And then the 409 million is projects on the list that currently do not have, we do not believe we will have funding for, short of finding some new revenues. So this is sort of how it slices out by type of funding, the top being measure, general fund and Measure C at 129 million, then water at 122 million, grants at 53 million, and that's largely our bridge program where we are in line for grant money. We don't count the grant money unless we're fairly certain we're getting it, at least not in the, as a proposed for funding. 48 million for wastewater, 38 million for streets capital other than Measure C, which would be Measure A and UUT money, and then 29 million for the airport and FAA, and then decreasing volume amounts as you go down the list and around the circle. Of the unfunded projects, you can see we're hoping to fund 164 million of them with grant money. 100 million would be waiting in line for a general fund. We're planning to debt fund 86 million, 37 million for airport and FAA projects. So I just want to give you some highlights of some of the capital improvement projects that you'll see in your document. As you know, the new police station is a very high priority for the city, and we are fut programming 13.5 million or proposing that the council program that money over the next five years. That would be for the design and permitting work. As I mentioned, this is a great project for candidate for debt funding because the value and the benefit of the project will be to future generations. And so we will likely issue a certificate of participation, which is a form of bond, essentially. The fire station number seven needs to be rebuilt, and that's proposed at 9.7 million. It's a 3,200-square-foot fire station up on Stamwood Drive. For the first two years, this project includes hiring a design professional to evaluate the long-term needs of the fire department at Fire Station Seven that contains separate dorm rooms, lockers, restrooms, and a captain's office. The other project, big project we want to highlight for fire is the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And when the Planning Commission accepted and recommended the capital improvement program, finding it consistent with city plans and policies, they also asked that we include in their recommendation that the city council find the fire protection plan a very high priority. The fire department has submitted this for a grant and they will find out in the next couple of weeks whether or not they've gotten that grant. And if they don't, I think we will be looking for a funding source for that. The library is a big building. It's very heavily used. It's old. It's got a lot of needs. They have 150,000 that they had asked, proposed, that is currently recommended as unfunded for the Central Library Lobby update. The Central Library Plaza Improvement Plan is unfunded. Last year, your council recommended that we fund that at $500,000 as seed money to get through design and permitting, and then ask the library and the library, friends of the library to do donations and try to do fundraising for that project. And then there's a $200,000 project need on the upper level to restore the upper level. I am happy to say that although we're featuring the unfunded projects here, we are planning to fund the library elevator, which is currently in design and should be ready for construction in 2021. So that's really exciting, the heavily used building, and that's a great accessibility project. Parks and Recreation has a lot of needs. They have a lot of facilities across the city. Proposed for funding in the CIP are 250,000 for the completion of the design for the Splash Playground and for permitting, take it through permitting. 250,000 for the Ortega Park Master Plan, that's to finish conceptual design. And then the Louise Lowery Davis Center is unfunded, but they are seeking grant money for that project as well. That's another building that needs some love and care. It's heavily used by the community. Public Works Downtown Parking, these are projects funded by parking fees. We are proposing to fund a computer system that will allow people to renew their parking permits for either residential parking or for parking in monthly permits in the lots and do that online. Currently, they all have to come into the office. 300,000 recommended for the Amtrak Building. This came out of a structural condition assessment report that we did on all of our parking assets, and it recommended column repair, plaster repair, roof repair, and window repair. We will be doing those over a number of years. And then installing on the far right protective railings and barriers on the Cannon Prudito and Ortega garages because there is a potential if somebody hit the wrong pedal that they could go through those barriers. We will be reinforcing them. Public Works Facilities, Facilities is one of those internal service funds that I mentioned that maintains all of the city's buildings and other facilities like parking lots. We are going to do a minor renewal at Fire Station Two and the Chase Palm Park Buildings. A minor renewal is really dealing with building systems like plumbing, electrical, mechanical, roof replacement, painting. Sometimes we need to do HVAC work, but really making the systems renewed. It really decreases the ongoing need for maintenance, so it lowers the operating cost. We frequently see big increases in the energy efficiency, and so that's another great gain out of those building renewals. We also need to repave the corporate yard. Not a very exciting project to most, but if it continues to get worse, it will be much more expensive to maintain that yard and replace it. With 254 miles of streets, we have a lot of need for capital investment in our street system, but the projects that you see here are really improvements as opposed to maintenance, which we do, I'm not showing up here. I'm really concentrating on the improvements. The corridor improvements on San Andres and San Pasquale Street are the installation of pedestrian-scale lighting, crosswalks, and really making that safer for all forms of transportation. It's currently unfunded and we are looking for grant funding for that. We have been very successful on grant funding. The next project, the corridor improvement for Lower State Street connectivity, the State Street underpass of the freeway, we have a $4.7 million grant. We think we need about 5.3. We won't know until it's designed and bid. So we have a little gap there, and that's such an exciting project because it's going to be coupled with an art project that Ms. Nina Johnson's working on through the Administrator's Office. So that's another great one. And then the Olive Mill Roundabout is being done as a parallel project with the HOV project on the freeway in order to reduce congestion, that really difficult intersection. The SB CAG has provided funding for all of that design so far and has committed to finding funding for the construction, but as yet, it's not funded. I did want to highlight the Mission Canyon Bridge Studies Project. 229,000 is proposed. This is federally funded with our local match. This is, I'm highlighting it because it's a very high-profile project for the city. This is a difficult area. It is extremely culturally sensitive and it, but the bridge was built in 1891 and then widened in 1930. The bridge is, and it has challenges, including declining lifespan, a structural rating for the bridge that continues to decline, deteriorating structural supports on the walkway attached to the bridge. The walkway was attached later and is not very accessible. Lack of earthquake retrofitting, existing collision pattern, and poor sightlines for drivers. And then I think most importantly and the strongest driver for this project is insufficient pedestrian walkways, crosswalks, bike lanes that can connect the Mission and Mission Historical Park with Rocky Nook Park and the Museum National History. I mean, they're very, very centrally located there. So the studies will look at all the options, and we will be back to council for direction on what to do, if anything. We've done this dance several times before and council had not wanted to go forward. At some point, we'll have to deal with the structural issues on the bridge, and there is a funding source for that, but you know, it's up to council. It's a community gem. And then the other one, that's another community gem that we're very excited about, is the Plaza de Legarre revitalization. And I know at least some of you were at the workshop we had on Saturday. We had over 150 people, we think, show up for that. The ID, the project was originally a redevelopment agency project that was not able to be funded when the RDA dissolved, and we're very beginning of the outreach process, and we will be back in March with more information on this to award a contract for the architect, RRM, for the design up through permitting, we hope, although we'll do that in phases. The, we really want a project that will be the heart of downtown, the center of our town, our town square, and that will host a myriad of things from protests to rallies to public festivals, and importantly, I think, the farmers marking, drawing our locals into town every week. So we're excited about the opportunities there and we will keep you closely involved. Moving to water, the Water Main Replacement Project is, we've had the project in place since about 1987. The old goal was to replace 1% of the system each year, which was about three miles. As of last year, you have increased that goal to 2%, which is six miles of pipe, which I regret to say means six miles of road construction because we have to trench to replace these pipes. It's vitally important. The reason we increased the goal is that we're seeing an increase in the number of water main breaks and we need to get these pipes repaired. We had a big surge in installation in the 1940s to 60s, and those pipes are the ones that we're seeing break so much. The wastewater plant, the El Estero Electrical Distribution Renewal, another of those really exciting projects, but the, the electrical system at the wastewater plant, which is, of course, its heart, is over 40 years old. It is obsolete. It's hard to find parts for it. It's a 480 kilowatt, not kilowatt, watt plant. I always get bad on the units for electrical. And it's, you know, it's, we are at risk of failure. That would be really, really bad. Our biological system, it's like a heart, drives the blood. We need this to drive the air and keep the plant alive. So we're moving forward on that. This is another one we will be pursuing debt because this should serve future generations just as the past one served the last couple of generations. And then the waterfront is, very excited about their icehouse replacement because it's important to their commercial fleet, and they're also working on replacing the lift stations under the har, under the wharf that I bet most of you didn't even know were there, that pump the sewage off the wharf and into the wastewater system. It's important because they are vulnerable to coastal storms, and if they aren't properly functioning, they could cause a sewage spill. The, not featured in the slides, and I think it was an oversight caused by our transition of airport directors, but the airports capital program is also a significant program, and their program includes terminal capacity enhancements to support increases in passengers, which is great. It includes a project to add an additional passenger jet bridge, shared gate use management system, and a realignment of their aircraft ramp at Gate One. So with that, I am available for questions, and I want to recognize that we have all staff from across the city departments here to answer questions about specific projects. I also want to acknowledge Kristy Velazquez, who's not here because she is the admin analyst who was responsible for compiling all this and was supposed to do the presentation today, but she's got the flu.
Okay. Mr. Rouse will go first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of quick questions, Ms. Bjork. The Stan, the Station Seven Fire Station, is that, that's the one that's adjacent to a Forest Service facility?
That's correct. The one up by Sheffield Reservoir.
At one point in time, there was a discussion about potentially cooperating with the feds. Is that still in play?
I can ask Mr. Waldron, Deputy Chief Waldron, to respond. Thank you, Chief.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Rouse, that is the station that's currently the site also of a fire, fire station, a Forest Service fire station, and we have, excuse me, and the plan is either to go together with the Forest Service and build a joint station or build an individual station depending on the Forest Service interests in that. We would like to keep the Forest Service in that area because it's a benefit to the city of Santa Barbara to have the Forest Service that close and the myriad of resources that they can draw on to help us in a wildland fire.
Okay, thank you. I had another question about another department real quickly.
Stay close in case there's more questions, Chief.
Okay. The Amtrak Building is within the downtown parking budget? I wasn't, is that?
Yeah, it's on the parking, on the parking lot parcel that was transferred to the downtown parking system after the redevelopment agency, so it is part of the assets they manage.
Okay, so the maintenance itself, because I realized there was within the parking lot itself, there was the, where open air bicycles was, but also that includes the actual station itself?
That's correct.
Okay. All I needed to know, I don't, thank you.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions. When it comes to the proposed street repairs to San Andres and San Pasquale, is there, is it at all possible to try to get the power lines buried along with the repairs to the streets?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gutierrez, the, the undergrounding of power lines is a significant project in and of itself and requires a lot of coordination with Edison. We do have what's sort of a sinking fund of money provided by Edison for undergrounding. We used a fund like that to underground on the Mesa a few years ago. It's not enough yet to do a project, and it is Edison money that pays for that. So we, when we have enough money, and we're getting close, I think we've got over $1 million, we would be talking with council about priority for where we would want to underground next, but that's, does, it would be a huge change in scope for that.
Okay, let me know if I can help out in any way with possibly getting that done. My other questions are with the, with the water, with all these replacements and repairs, has any thought gone into possibly making it so that we can collect our gray water in the process of doing these repairs?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gutierrez, gray water is water that is untreated and is generally used on the site where it is produced. And you, we, to collect it separately, the water that is collected from households, used water, is of course wastewater, which is sent to the wastewater treatment plant where a portion of it is recycled and reused around the city. Anytime you put in separate infrastructure, you are doubling the number of lines in the street. So the best way to use gray water is to have people doing it on their own properties, and we do have sample plans available and a no-cost permit for people and a lot of resource to support that. If you're interested, we have those at the building counter in the Public Works Building at 630 Garden Street. And there's some fairly easy conversions.
When it comes to like all the rainwater that we just experienced, is there any way that we could try to collect that?
Well, we are going to be looking at the long-term water supply plan, and one of the things we will look at and we have looked at historically is rainwater capture. Our challenge is that even a small rainstorm makes a huge volume of water, and we need somewhere to store it because when it's raining isn't when we have the demand. So we need to store it till the summertime when there's demand for it, and in a built-out city like ours, it's really a challenge. It would need to go underground in some kind of vault, and it's a real challenge. The best way for us to, to deal with rainwater is to do rain gardens and look to keep rainwater on private property rather than letting it run off onto our hardscape because that allows it to recharge our aquifers, which of course is part of our water supply.
And Madam Mayor and Councilmember Gutierrez, we have done some creek restoration projects with that in mind as well. I think the Oak Park Project in particular tried to slow down the flow of water, not during peak flooding events, but during lower flow in hopes that more can infiltrate into our groundwater basins and kind of reuse it that way.
Thank you. And just another question, when it comes to our wastewater, has any thought gone into how to use it to produce energy?
Yes, Councilmember Gutierrez, we do use some of the wastewater to produce energy already. We produce about three-quarters of the energy that the plant, wastewater plant consumes in our anaerobic digesters with methane gas, and we have a reciprocating engine that converts that to electricity. It also creates waste heat that we use to heat those digestors. They're, think stomach, they work like a stomach, and they're 98 degrees, and so we use that both for the heat to offset natural gas and for the energy production. Part of the driver behind that electrical system I talked about is that we are limited right now in our ability to expand increased energy generation at the treatment plant because the electrical system can't handle it. So that will help us look forward to future generation. There are plants in the world that are net, net energy producers, and certainly there's an opportunity there, and we will be doing our best to exploit that if we can. there's an opportunity there, and we will be doing our best to exploit that if we can.
Thank you.
Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Bjork. I know that you mentioned that a project is a good candidate for debt financing when the use of the project will be of significant importance to future generations, and I would think that you can make that argument for pretty much all of these projects. So, I would appreciate it if you could speak a little bit about some of the other characteristics that, in your view, make a project appropriate for debt financing.
Certainly, I think the other, excuse me, thank you, Councilmember Harmon. I think one of the other things that really makes it important to debt funding is when it's kind of a balloon payment. So, for instance, our water mains should last 80 to 100 years, yet we do an annual replacement of that. So, every year, we're making an investment into that with cash funding. The wastewater plant project at the wastewater, which is almost $20 million, to cash fund that would require either a big rate increase now or not doing a lot of other needed capital work right now in order to have the cash available. It's kind of like buying a home. If you have a big expenditure like that, frequently you need some help to be able to pay it off over time.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And by way of follow-up, is Fire Station 7, sorry, Mr. Casey, is that going to be debt financed? I may have missed that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Harmon, really good questions, because those are policy calls that eventually we're going to have to talk to city council about. Fire Station 7, depending upon the timing and how much it costs and how much Measure C money we have, you might co-mingle that with the debt financing for the police station and just issue one debt and pay for those two projects. You might decide to add a couple more projects into that debt financing, but the more projects you add into the debt financing, the more annual payments you need to make, and the less money you'll have on a pay-as-you-go basis to deal with other infrastructure needs. And so, it's just a policy question about how much you want to put into debt payments and getting the projects done now versus maintaining some revenue to kind of hit needs as they come up and go forward. So, those are all questions. We'll bring them to you kind of as we're doing it. We historically have not done a lot of debt financing in the city, and so we're fortunate that we don't have a lot of debt on the books. We clearly think the police station is one that we will do debt financing, and the question will be, do you want to co-mingle that with a few other high-priority projects or not?
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Harmon, one more piece to that. For the, for instance, for the wastewater project, there's a source of funding available that is extremely low interest that makes it, it actually probably costs us more than the cost of money, I mean, less than the cost of money. It's one point. It's usually less than 2% in the interest rate, so it's a very attractive kind of funding. And the same with the water projects.
Good. Mr. Friedman?
Following up on the fire station, the 9.7 million cost, it was mentioned that the Forest Service and they have their station. Would that affect that cost, or would they have their own building, so they're, would we drive it down with economies of scale? So, if they partnered with us, could we reduce that 9.7 million?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Friedman. We're still looking at those types of issues. I think our first feeling is that it doesn't necessarily going to save us on our 9.7 million, but you'd like to do it once and kind of partner with it and have it work in tandem. It's plausible that the Forest Service says, look, we really want to do something, but we don't have the money upfront, but we're willing to lock in a long-term lease payment, such that we issue debt, and then they pay off the lease payment for that to help fund the construction. That's something we might look at. We're not super encouraged right now about their ability to step up and financially participate, but we're continuing to have those conversations with them.
Great. Thank you. And one other question. It's a little off-topic, but we're getting emails and calls about, due to the rain this year, the condition of our roads and the maintenance potholes and those types of things. Since this is capital, but can you explain briefly how we're addressing the uptake in maintenance due to the winter storms this year?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, yes, thank you. I didn't feature it here, but Measure C, which was the one cent sales tax approved by voters two years ago, is a really critical part of that. We are recommending or proposing to have about $15 million in Measure C funding going to various forms of road and right-of-way maintenance. The problem is that, like the rest of the country, sales tax, the gas tax, which is the primary source of maintenance for roads, source of money for maintenance for roads, has not kept up with inflation, nowhere near. In fact, it hadn't been raised since about 94, I think, 2004. I'm sorry, I'm bad on the gears. But, way behind, and not only that, then, gas prices have not increased very much, and since it's a tax, it's a percentage, and cars have become much more efficient. So, the revenues just haven't kept up. As a result, our goal for our roads is a condition index called the pavement condition index. It's basically a report card. Our goal is to have a 70. We're currently at a 60, and when you, it's a steep decline. As you go down in that condition index, it gets steeper and steeper. So, what we're seeing is after, the roads have been in bad shape for a while, but we, the one good thing about the drought is it hid the condition of the roads. Now that we're getting some rain, we're really seeing a pop-up in potholes. The good news is that with added resources and with a lot of work that we've done to improve our approach to road maintenance in terms of our own efficiencies, we have a really skilled and equipped team that has the revenue for the supplies we need to go out and be able to address those potholes, as well as doing much bigger-scale projects. And we're about to see the second half of a big project for fiscal year 19 going out this spring that we'll be doing slurry seal over a good portion of the city.
Thank you.
Good. Mr. Dominguez?
I had a question about the wastewater electrical distribution renewal. So, 18 and a half million, that's an expensive piece of electronics. Is there anything that that adds value to? Are we leveraging that for something else?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, it is not one piece of electronics. We have four or five electrical substations throughout the city, so I think four or five transformer stations that power different functions of the plant. And so, it's a very extensive amount of electrical work. It's also a high voltage. So, just a very complex. In terms of leveraging other things, we're really focusing on the electrical distribution system. It will allow us to move power around more efficiently. The other challenge is you have to keep it working, so we have to build a new replicate set before we turn over, switch from one system to the other. So, making it fit into the existing buildings is sometimes a challenge, because they were built, you can't take it out and replace it in the building. So, we may, I don't know quite what the design looks like on that. We're not that far along yet, but it's going to be expensive.
And is this going to be microgrid-friendly? Is this something that helps us get set up for that, hopefully near future?
I don't, that's a good question. The piece that we would need for that would be energy storage, and it's not, you know, the electrical system will convey the electricity, which is what we're working on, but the storage component, we do have generation there, so all of that generation has to be used on-site. Any surplus generation that we are able to produce, short of having a different set of rules that we're operating under, is not allowed to be exported unless we sell it to Edison. So, there are a lot of components to that, but we'd probably need a pretty substantial battery storage. The thing about the wastewater plant is that it's located adjacent to a lot of places that have continual need, so we can, you know, the microgrid works well when you can store it one time and then use it another. But we will, we're looking, as you know, at the carbon-free by 2050, 30? 30, wow. And, and so, that will certainly be something we'll look at, because water and wastewater are some of our biggest users of electricity for city facilities.
I just want to make sure we're not in a situation where we invest this 18 million, and then we're putting out RFPs for microgrid technology, and everyone says we can't interface with your system.
We're certainly trying to make it forward-looking, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess one challenge there is that a lot of that technology is really rapidly changing. So, much as we try, there's no guarantees, but certainly, the team working on that is aware of wanting to be as energy-neutral as possible.
And is there a deadline for replacing what we have?
Before it breaks.
What's the forecast on that?
Well, it's at risk. It's over 40 years old, and as I said, a lot of it's obsolete, so finding parts is harder and harder. Well, we wouldn't, we don't, I don't think it would, we would have a catastrophic failure, but we might have to have a lot of expensive workarounds and patches to deal with things that fail. But, you know, certainly if our substation A, which is our primary feeder station, had problems, it could be a real problem for us. That's also the station that, if we lose Edison power, where our generator feeds in, so that's a very, very critical piece for us. And we, we're not planning on doing this project ahead of, we were going to do a solids project first, but when we did the assessment, we determined this needed to move forward in priority. So...
So, maybe a year from now. It's not in the first year of the two years?
It's in design, yeah. It's in preliminary design, so we're looking for the future, you know, the continuing design.
And when you talk about energy storage, are you talking about hooking it to a solar system?
No, because that's just a generation. I'm looking at batteries. So, there are different kinds of energy storage, and one thing that might be an opportunity at a plant like this is, one form of energy storage is to use water. You pump the water up when you have surplus energy. That's particularly good match for solar, because you can pump it up at night with surplus energy and then use it for hydro at night, during the, pump it up in day when you have surplus energy and use it for hydro at night when you have no surplus from the solar.
Right. I know Edison does that at their big creek facility, but what is the energy you're talking about needing to store?
Oh, the energy that would be produced from the digesters, from the cogeneration facility, or future solar that we put on the site.
So, the energy you're producing now is a daytime-only source?
Oh, no, it's all day, but we don't have surplus. It's all used as it's produced. We can't, we don't have, we aren't meeting our full demand, but if we wanted to produce more, we might either have peaking issues or hopefully produce more than...
Okay, that's the part I'm missing. So, you, we do intend to create more energy there?
We think we may need to build another digester, and we are looking at that as well, and that would allow us to have more gas generation, which would then allow greater methane production and more energy production from that renewable source. Similarly, we could cite solar down there potentially and generate more electricity that way.
Thank you.
We have a public comment speaker, Ms. Raisin. Were you ready? There's another item on the capital improvement project, but I think this is the one you wanted. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. You know, I was just thinking back on my science classes and how poorly I did in science. I think I've learned more from the Public Works Department in Grace's invitation to visit them a couple of weeks ago, which I really appreciated. Not that I'm able to understand much more, but I certainly know their heart and their training is in the right place. I can't think the ground under our feet, the lights over our head, of any more important department to fund and to help. I'm so glad that they are the benefits of the Measure C, measure that passed, and I just would encourage you and the public who's listening to make an appointment with Mrs. Bjork and go down and talk to them and see what they do. Their earnestness and their, if there's such a word, their intentions and their intelligence about their work is truly outstanding. And it is, after all, the ground under our feet, the lights over our head, the distribution of water and waste, it's, what would we do without them? You know, I guess we'd be like the Indians up at Mission Creek, dragging our own pails of water around, but please, give them high priority on your funding. Thank you.
Thanks. That's a nice compliment to our Public Works Department. This is receiving the report. If there's any comments, I guess I would channel Councilmember Sneddon. She's not here.
Madam Mayor, we do actually want to ask that you formally vote to accept it.
Ah, okay, so we will. So, I'll just finish my thought to expedite the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. I know that's important to her. She's homesick today. So, if I could have a motion to accept this, please.
I make a motion.
So, Gutierrez?
Second.
Second by Harmon. Any other discussion? Mr. Dominguez?
So, I want to get a little more knowledge about this, how this $18 million piece fits in. If we're trying to go all alternative energy by 2030, that's 11 years from now, and maybe we need someone from Energy Sustainability here to answer that question, but I'm reluctant to vote for this if this is going to push us forward and really eliminate the possibility to work with what's a big energy use from our city inventory.
It looks like Mr. Wiltshire has some information for us.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I'm Mike Wiltshire, the Facilities and Energy Manager. We're early on with this renewable energy goal of 2030, and so a lot of this is being determined right now in the Strategic Energy Plan. We provided an update to you fairly recently, and another one is pending, and these sort of large energy users, El Estero, this is kind of the focal point of this Strategic Energy Plan. So, a lot of this sort of thing will come out between our energy team and the consultants that we've hired to come up with these sort of solutions. So, they're going to weigh in on those types of projects and make sure that they fit our plan going forward.
And the timing of that weighing in, is this something where they can weigh in on this $18 million? If it turns out this is not compatible with the future, we can stop and not spend the 18 million?
Absolutely. I don't have a full understanding of this switchgear project, but my, what I do understand of it, it's kind of, it is critical switchgear, so it's needed to move electrons from El Estero to the main grid, and so that's sort of primary operational equipment that needs to be updated regardless of if we're going to be feeding it with renewable energy or Southern California Edison-supplied energy.
So, when will we hear back from the consultant on whether this project is feasible for the future?
I believe our next update on the Strategic Energy Plan is within the next kind of three to six months.
And they'll specifically address this issue?
They'll specifically address this issue, along with a number of other opportunities down at El Estero and our other major energy-using facilities.
Great, thank you.
Good. Will you vote for the motion? Okay, then let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that looks unanimous, Madam Clerk. We will close that, but there's more capital improvement program information coming. Ms. Clerk, will you read the item?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item number seven, subject Capital Improvement Project Status Report.
Thanks.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Brian Demore, city engineer for the City of Santa Barbara. This item before you today, it's CIP Day, I guess, at council, which makes me happy. I really enjoy CIP. The item, the previous item was more, much more forward-looking, whereas this one, I come to you twice a year and just give a pretty informal update on the capital projects that are in progress. So, those that have funding secured and they're either completed, we highlight the projects that have been completed in the last couple of quarters, and then we look at projects that are in design and in construction. And there's kind of the snapshot that I often will present, and we can kind of look back in the history of our capital programs and see how we're doing. Do we have more, more work funded than we have in the past? And I looked back at those trends as I prepared for this item today, and it's not necessarily the number of projects that have changed over the years, or the number of design projects that we have that have changed, but what I'm seeing is there's a lot more projects that are getting funded. So, it's those completed projects and the active construction projects, those numbers are higher than we've seen in the past, and that trend has been going on for two or three years, and I'm anticipating it will keep going. That's a good thing for this community, but it's definitely making, for a lot of work for Engineering Division and for other, some of the other programs that have capital projects. Just looking quickly at completed projects in the last couple of quarters, not a lot. Got six projects listed there, and I was just going to highlight one of those. Actually, before I do that, I wanted to mention our P3s. So, we have performance measures for our capital programs, our capital projects, and we try to limit the amount of soft costs, as we call it. So, there's the construction cost when we put a project out to bid, the money that goes to building the project for the physical construction of it. And then the soft cost is basically everything else, designing it, permitting it, managing construction. And we have two different measures depending on the size of the project. If it's under $400,000, we like to limit those soft costs to less than 35% of the total project cost, and on the larger projects, greater than $400,000, we look to limit it to less than 20%. So, as the project gets bigger, the soft costs get less. So, often, it seems like a $10 million project... So often, it seems like a $10 million project is easier to manage than a $200,000 project. You have to go through a lot of the same steps and hurdles. So I'm happy to report that on these projects, we have met, cumulatively, we've met those goals. Just the only project that's been completed that I wanted to highlight was this runway 725. It's the main commercial runway at the airport, and the FAA has been another great funding source for the city, and really helping the airport to maintain operations out there. This was a key project to keeping that runway operational, and it was night work, as you can see from the photo. And that, as I mentioned earlier, that was about a $10 million project where the soft costs were extremely low. Don't have to worry so much about the day-to-day traffic control as we do when we're paving city streets. They shut down the runway and they've got access between certain hours, and they can work really, really efficiently. Construction projects in progress. We have a lot of big construction projects that are in progress across various programs. $131 million worth of work. That number remains high. I think the D-SAL project is captured in that, so that's a big number. Until that project is officially completed, it won't drop. A few of those that I wanted to highlight, one of them is pavement maintenance, so that was talked about a little bit in the earlier item. We have two significant projects this fiscal year, primarily funded by Measure C. The first one is in construction. We're calling it FY19A. This is a slurry seal project, so the major component of the project is resurfacing the streets with a thin slurry. We haven't done that in quite a number of years because we simply haven't had enough money to do the preventative maintenance. We had been in a triage mode. So it's great to have the funding source and to be able to do these preventative maintenance measures to hopefully save money in the future, to push the larger repairs further out into the future. What you're seeing here, I mentioned pavement maintenance, you may be asking, well, what are these guys doing? That looks like concrete work. There is a ton of concrete work associated with the pavement work that we're doing. Some of it's required, such as access ramps. When we do pavement maintenance, not with the slurry seal, but when we're doing grind and overlay, we're required to provide access. If there isn't an access ramp, we need to install that to create the accessible path in our right-of-way. While we're doing that, we're also looking up and down the sidewalks along those corridors and making sure that the sidewalks, the curb, gutter, spandrel, all of the other concrete work is repaired into a good condition before we go in and do the pavement maintenance. That's adding a lot of additional cost to the projects than we had anticipated. Hopefully, more of a one-time thing, because concrete should last for many, many years, so the next time we come back on the cycle to do this road, it'll be a lower cost. But that's just been a little bit of a headwind on this program as we implement the Measure C funding. And just some information for the public, if they're wondering what streets are going to be paved, I would recommend going on the city's website, and you can do a search of Measure C, and you can find the projects that are funded, and on this particular project, it'll list the streets that are to receive treatment.
Mr. Demore? It is less intrusive, right, than trenching for a water pipe? It's, but you do close the street for a day? Is that what, is that what the slurry usually entails?
With the slurry, there's often a series of mobilizations that have to take place, so the slurry needs to cure, so that takes some time. There'll be a closure when that happens, and then there's a remobilization to do striping. So there's various-
Oh, I see.
-steps that have to take place, but for the day that the slurry gets applied, you would expect to have no traffic on that road for that day.
Thanks.
Whereas with asphalt paving, you can put the traffic back on it almost immediately. Railroad crossing at State Street, this is pedestrian improvements, another grant-funded project through, it's called the Section 130 Program through the state. That's under construction and should be completed this summer. Fire Station 3, 4, and 5 minor renewal. This is, again, a Measure C-funded project, some badly needed repairs to these critical pieces of infrastructure, roofing, flooring, windows, paint, some utility upgrades. So we're happy to get those projects going. These are at all three stations, different components are happening now, and again, will be completed this summer. Design in progress. List 32 projects there, $80 million. I think that number's bumped up a little bit since last year. Part of that is a bunch of grants that we were able to land through the Active Transportation Talked about bridges a little bit earlier. This project depicted here is the De La Vina Street Bridge. I want to just jump back a little bit and talk briefly about the bridge program. We've done 10 bridge projects in about the last eight to 10 years, and we have two that were just awarded last week for construction, Quiniento Street Bridge and De La Guerra Bridge. So that'll get us to 12, and then we have two more that are in design, De La Vina Street Bridge and Carpinteria Bridge. We haven't initiated the funding yet on Carpinteria Bridge. So that gets us up to 14, and then what we're going to see after the two that are in construction this year, the program's going to kind of wind down, and we won't be doing multiple bridges a year, maybe one every three or four years, which would be good. I think that's, with the number of bridges that we have, you'd expect to see every couple of years. Storm drain asset management, Phase 1 and 2. This is also funded by Measure C, and we're trying to answer a bunch of important questions, you know, what's out there, who owns it, what is the condition of it, what's the capacity, what capacity does it need to be? We don't know a lot of answers to those. We don't have all of those answers. So we're looking, we're targeting certain locations for now, and then we're going to spread that out throughout the city. That's ongoing. I think, yeah, we've got ProPipe under contract right now doing that assessment. And pavement maintenance, FY19B, this is the grind and overlay portion of it. So I mentioned slurry, that was about a $6 million. This one's also roughly $6 million. So we've got about $12 million of mostly Measure C money going towards pavement maintenance. What you see here is Mission Street, so we have the very ambitious goal of repaving Mission Street later this year using those funds, as well as SB 1 funding. Last project I was, wanted to highlight, and this again was also mentioned earlier, is water main replacement. So this reflects that 2% goal and about six miles of our system. So between pavement maintenance, water main replacement, and a lot of private work, there is a lot happening out there in the streets, and a lot of good coordination that's happening to make sure that things are done in the right order and least impactful to the community.
Mr. Dominguez has a question.
Sure.
Can I just go back to the bridges?
Yes.
Can you tell me, did you say the Carpinteria Bridge? What phase is that in, design or pre-design?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, yeah, we'd call it the pre-design. We have funding programmed by Caltrans for that project, but we haven't asked for the authorization yet. So very preliminary at this point, but the funding is secure for design.
And the construction up at the roundabout on Salinas, what's the status of that?
Yes, that's the Montecito Yananali Bridge. We should have an opening next month.
Great, thank you.
Well, I don't see any other lights, and there's no public speakers. So, and this is receiving a presentation. So, Mr. Demore, thank you. And I saw a list of completed projects. Congratulations on all of those. We'll go ahead and close this item with thanks-
Thank you.
...and move on. We can power on, right? We don't need a break. Would you read the next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item number eight, subject: Appeal of the Historic Landmarks Commission's Decision to Deny Removal of Two Sidewalk Fountains in the 500 Block of State Street.
Okay. This is a land use appeal. It's a particularly serious responsibility of our city council. It's called a quasi-judicial proceeding, and there are specific rules and a format. And the structure is, council members will, at first thing, disclose any ex parte communications with the appellant or the applicant. We'll have a staff presentation. We'll have remarks from a design review board representative, if appropriate, questions from the council. The appellant will get 20 minutes, and if you don't use it all, we'll store it if you'd like to, you know, ask questions later or have a rebuttal. After that, questions from the council, a presentation from the applicant, 20 minutes, questions from the council, public comment, and then we'll deliberate on our decision. So are there any ex parte communications to reveal? Your light's on, Mr. Dominguez, but I think it's just on from last time. Okay. So it sounds like, I mean, I was at the, I've been at some meetings where people were talking about it, but not direct communication with anybody. So we'll go ahead and go to staff presentation if we're ready. Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. The item before you this afternoon is to consider the appeal of the Historic Landmarks Commission's decision to deny a review after final request to remove two existing sidewalk fountains located on the 500 Block of State Street. This slide depicts the general location encircled in yellow of the fountains on State Street. This is elevation of State Street, and as you can tell, the fountains have been encircled in yellow. They are located in the right-of-way in near proximity to the Hotel Santa Barbara. The proposal is to remove two non-operational sidewalk fountains on State Street, 500 Block, and replace them with sandstone star-shaped pattern tile. The fountains were installed in 2007 as part of the Phase 4 of the State Street Sidewalk Improvement Project, and in 2014, the fountains became non-operational following the Stage 2 drought declaration, which prohibited the use of water in fountains. In June of 2017, the Historic Landmarks Commission approved the temporary installation of plants in the non-operational fountains as, as an effort to conserve water during the drought while at the same time beautifying State Street. This is a slide of the non-operational fountains prior to the plantings. And this is the current condition of the fountains with the plants installed. On November 14th of last year, the downtown parking staff requested removal of the two fountains to be replaced with sidewalk brick to match the existing surrounding sidewalk. The consent reviewer, it was reviewed at consent, and the reviewer found the removal of the fountains to be acceptable, and continued the item two weeks in order to allow the applicant to study a star pattern design. During the ratification of the consent agenda at the full commission, the project was pulled up to the full commission for review and consideration. In December of 2018, the project was reviewed and considered by the HLC. Some members of the commission felt or preferred keeping the fountains and recognized them as architectural design elements, and felt that removal of the fountains was not appropriate, was not an appropriate way to address the nuisance issues that had been identified as the basis for the removal of the fountains. Other HLC members agree that the fountains were no longer attractive due to the abusive treatment that they had sustained or have sustained. The HLC was limited in their, in their review authority in this case because the proposal was to remove the fountains, so they were limited to either approve or deny the request for removal. And on a six-to-one vote, the HLC decided to retain the fountains and denied the request. An appeal was filed by Tamara Erickson of Hotel Santa Barbara on the basis that the fountains no longer serve their intended purpose as character-defining features and actually have become an attractive nuisance. The letter of appeal cites that the fountains are physically in poor condition due to the abusive treatment, also that they invite loitering and crime, and are, and also attract inappropriate behavior, and further that the fountains currently pose a security issue for hotel, for the hotel and guests. In considering the proposal to remove the fountains, the HLC ultimately determined that the fountains should remain based on the role fountains play as architectural design elements and focal points, consistent with the El Pueblo Viejo design guidelines pertaining to fountains. If the council concurs that the fountains should be retained, the appeal should be denied. If council finds that removal of the fountains is appropriate and consistent with Municipal Code Section 22.22-145B, the appeal may be upheld, and I have those particular code sections for you. This slide contains the text in the guidelines with respect to fountains, and specifically that fountains add an interesting and focal point to landscape and courtyard settings, and at the bottom of that passage, that fountains also add sense of time and place. The project compatibility criteria, there's six criteria that, that the projects usually are reviewed, that's the standard of review. The criteria that mostly applies to this project are, is 1 and 2, and I'll read that, those for you. One, compliance with the city charter and municipal code, and consistency with design guidelines, and in this case, the fountains are consistent with the El Pueblo Viejo design guidelines pertaining to fountains. And two, that the project is compatible with the architectural character of the city and neighborhood, and specifically that the design, or the fountains contain architectural qualities and characteristics which are distinctive of Santa Barbara and of the neighborhood. In this case, State Street and EPV. I'll just read the title here, that appropriate size, mass, bulk, and scale, sensitivity to adjacent landmarks and historic resources, public views of oceans and mountains, not applicable, use of open space and landscaping. Staff recommends that the council consider the appeal of the Historic Landmarks Commission's denial of a request to remove the two fountains located on 500 Block of State Street, and directs staff to return to council with decision and findings reflecting the outcome of the appeal. Commissioner Steve House is here from the architecture, I mean, the Historic Landmarks Commission- Commission to address your, your counsel. That concludes my presentation, Madam Mayor.
Very good. Mr. House, please come up, and we'll take questions after your presentation. Mr. Mahan, you're on the Historic Landmarks Commission as well, and you voted the other way. Maybe we'll take your comment now as a yin and yang on the subject. Mr. House, welcome.
Greetings. We were all quite conflicted. I was actually leaning towards approving the removal initially, but I was swayed by Cheryl Lavoie's comments about these beautiful street furnishings are one of the draws to visitors to Santa Barbara, and it's just a shame to be losing things like that. A day or two after the HLC meeting, I got a call from Mr. Victor Garza, and we had a discussion about possibly moving them to a more appropriate location on State Street. I personally think that would be the ideal win-win solution. They're beautiful fountains. Many people commented on that. They need some repair at this point, but I believe due to the nature of their construction, they could be picked up with a hoist and a backhoe and just taken up a few blocks up State Street to a new location pending approval of whatever property owners are potential sites for that. But, you know, the, the term unattractive nuisance, I think, applies more to the people that defile our public infrastructure. But I think the fountains are beautiful, and I think they are of great value to Santa Barbara, and I would like to see moving them be, be considered. Any questions?
I don't see any lights, but thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Mahan? Your perspectives, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council, and welcome.
Ms. Harman.
Harman. Councilwoman Harman, welcome. The, well, for those of you that don't know, I was the project architect for the first six blocks of, of the State Street Plaza that was designed in, in 1966 and completed in 1969. And when Bob Cunningham, in, in 10 or 12 or 14 years ago, was retained to, to look at the whole plaza and, and re-embellish it, he, he retained me to be the, his consultant architect. So, I've been involved through my whole career with the plaza. It means very much to me. I care a lot about it. I don't think it should be changed very much, usually. But I also do the consent calendar for the Historic Landmarks Commission. And three months, approximately three months ago, Ms. Erickson from the Hotel Santa Barbara came, and also city staff came to ask if these fountains could be removed. They, Ms. Erickson made a very, very important plea to me that, that the fountains disturbed her business. The people that hung out by the fountains disturbed her business, and the people that are arriving, they have a turnout there where all of their guests disembark right between the two fountains. And, and city staff that has to maintain the fountains made a very, very important plea to me that, that the fountains, once they don't have water because of our moratorium on, on water in fountains, they become debris basins, and they're filled up with cigarette butts, candy wrappers, and God knows what else. So, I, I listened to that very carefully, and I, and I, I felt very strongly that they had a good case for removing these fountains. Mr. House, Commissioner House says maybe we should remove them to someplace else, and that's a different issue. I wasn't looking at that issue, and I think when it came before the full commission, we weren't looking really at whether they should be moved or not. Maybe that's an issue that could be treated. But anyway, the, the, so I, I approved removing the fountains, but that decision was bumped up to the full commission, and the full commission decided to vote against that. They, they made a finding, in the staff report, very nice staff report, by the way. They made a finding, character defining features that make Santa Barbara unique. So, that's true. I can't, I can't disagree with that. But, but I, I want to bring your attention to, on page three of your staff report, this Santa Barbara Municipal Code Section 22.22-145B, where it says, on the second line, it starts, "The following criteria shall be considered by the Historic Landmarks Commission when it reviews and approves," or disapproves, "the design of a proposed development project." Of course, the project is the removal of the, of the fountains. And then there are six findings. Staff has referred to one and two as being important. I believe that finding number four is the one that is really important. It says, "Sensitivity to adjacent landmarks and historic resources is," that's, that's the period, "is the design of the project," the project would be removal of the fountains, "is the design of the project appropriately sensitive to adjacent landmarks and/or nearby designated historic resources?" The, the designated historic resource is the Hotel Santa Barbara. On that site, there have been hotels continuously since 1856. First, the American Hotel, which burned down in 19, in 1880, and then the second hotel, which stood until the earthquake in 1925 where it went down. And then the new Santa Barbara Inn, or not, the, the Hotel Santa Barbara was built, and it's 93 years old now. It is on our list, it is on our list of structures to be given historic, to be made a historic landmark. And it was designed by the very, very prominent architectural firm of Suter and Lockhart, who designed this building here that we're in, and who designed the Unitarian Church. We just made the Unitarian Church a historic landmark. This is a very, very important historic resource. And the fountains, in their, in their decay and in their misuse, degrade the historic resource. I can tell you that every time we look at a new project, we are concerned with, does a new project degrade an adjacent historic resource? We always look at that. I don't believe that the, that the Landmarks Commission, when they made their decision, I don't believe that they made that finding or considered that finding. And because of that, I think they acted improperly, and, and therefore, I think that you should sustain the appeal. Thank you, and I stand for questions.
Thank you. I don't see any lights. Thank you, Mr. Mahan, for your perspective. Mr. Casey, I will lodge the first question. Mr. House had suggested, and I'm not sure if the city council would be interested in, if we decide to remove them, if they could be moved somewhere else. So, you don't have to answer right now, maybe you need to go think about it. But before we begin deliberating, could they go to private property? Would they, would it be a backhoe, or, you look like you're ready to answer, Mr. Dayton.
Absolutely, Madam.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, council members, it's really not practical to move the fountains. You wanted to construct them somewhere else in, in a replica or something like that, but the way they're put together, trying to move them would be more expensive than building them again. Plus, they're, they're rather worn out and chipped quite a bit.
Okay, we've seen, we've seen some photographs to that effect, okay. Any questions at this point for staff, Mr. House, or Mr. Mahan? No. So, we'll move on to the, oh, Mr. Gutierrez, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How, how much would it cost to keep them maintained?
Keep them maintained where they are?
Yes.
The maintenance of the fountain as they are, are, as a planter, are actually an ongoing expense for us. So, I don't have the exact detailed costs. Perhaps, perhaps Ms. Buck has them.
I don't have the detailed costs, but I do know over the past year, we've replanted the, those planters at least five times.
And the challenge is that regardless, and it's kind of, it's kind of a conundrum for us, because we're not sure how to deal with it, but when we plant the plants, people sit in the, and they just sit in the planter. It's not even a comfortable seat because it's a, it's a very pointy edge, but they, they sit in, and they get, and so they get quite a bit of use as a bench. And so, we can't keep them beautiful the way they are.
And to have it filled with water again would not be possible in our current drought condition?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gutierrez, with the current drought condition, we have a moratorium, so until the moratorium's lifted, we can't be putting water in it.
Right. They would be forbidden to have water in a stage-two drought, and we're in a stage-three right now.
And that's, that's our own rule.
I have a follow-up question. Would it be possible to have it open to public volunteers to maintain the fountains?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gutierrez, I, I think it's, it's a possibility, but I think we may spend more staff time actually managing the volunteers to do it. But if they came forward and they were absolutely diligent, and we knew that they had a passion for it, I, the, the challenge is that people keep sitting in them, so, and then, and then it's an ambassador issue as well. So, our ambassador, are, are down there asking people to get them off. We put the signs on. And then, so, because they are treating it that way, the loitering is what you're going to hear from our presentation from downtown parking, it has been the issue, and then that's led to police calls. And so, it's, although the plantings and the maintaining of the plantings is a real issue, and it's a real challenge for us, that the way it's designed and set up, which wasn't for a planter in the first place, and the use of it is actually the bigger issue, the loitering and the police calls.
Thank you.
Ms. Harman, but for the record, you're Ms. Plummer, right?
No.
This is Heather Buck from our team.
Heather Buck, okay, thanks. Go ahead, Ms. Harman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I may be jumping the gun here a bit, but piggybacking off of Councilmember Gutierrez's question. Is there any data about the increase or the number of police calls that are specifically connected to interactions at the fountain or complaints in connection with the fountain and the costs that are borne out of that? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Harman. So, we've had, in the last year, we had 134 police calls to Santa Barbara Inn. Forty percent of them were related directly, at least 40%, 40% were related directly to the fountains. And that's very unusual for a location on State Street. A specific location.
And would it be hard to say what the cost is? That was part two of her question. Okay, maybe we.
I don't have any information on the specific costs.
Okay. But I get where she's going with that, so very good. Thank you, Mr. Dayton. Any other questions? Okay, we're good then to go to the appellant? If you're ready, Ms. Erickson, or? Let me set this. Whenever you're ready, you've got 20 minutes, and remember, if you save a little, you can come back at the end and use your time at the end.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council. I'm Tamara Erickson, and I think it's interesting that I come after Kathy with Visit Santa Barbara and Rebecca with the Public Works. Strong, intelligent women doing important things, and we're kind of in the nexus between hospitality and public works with this issue. And so, I thought it was just kind of curious that we follow that. This is an appeal in the true sense of the word. I am appealing to you. I'm asking for your reason, and I'm asking you to reconsider the decision that pretty much everyone that I've spoken with thought was a pretty good solution to a really longstanding problem. I'm here on behalf of Hotel Santa Barbara and also the six retail businesses in our building, five of which are local businesses. Starbucks, Game Seeker, Asher Market, Marcel's Hemp Clothing, Fazino 3D Gallery, and Stabeel's Boutique. And I'm also here on behalf of my family, who has owned the building at the corner of State and Cota, the Neil Callahan Building, since 1975. So, I've been down there on and off for a long time myself. I'm here as a participant in the process. I'm a downtown organization board member. I attend the safety committee meetings every month or more often. I've been around long enough to have been part of the original Old Town Merchants Association. I have written many letters to previous councils about this with police logs and pictures, and I am interested in being a part of the process. I'm not coming shaking my fist. I've really tried hard for the last two or three years to get this resolved some other way. I know that problems like this are complicated, but I also know a good solution with a lot of support when I see one, and I think that's what we presented. The solution, as you know, came from the city, and when Victor initially asked me to come and help support planting the fountains, I thought, great idea. And I went, we went through the process, they, there was a process for picking out plants, those got approved, they got planted, they looked great. We took a staff photo celebrating, we posted it on social media. We were really excited about that solution and, and very hopeful that the fountains that had been dry and had been a problem could be reclaimed and be something different. Sadly though, neither the plants nor the tile have been hardy enough to withstand the onslaught of people who, for whatever reason, have chosen that location as a, as a spot for, to use as, as a, everything from a bar to a toilet to an open-air satellite business location to sell drugs and paraphernalia and who knows what. It's been going on for a long time. And again, another solution came from, from Victor and the city, which we were really happy to be partnering with the city, as we're happy to partner with Visit Santa Barbara. And this proposal, as you know, as you just heard, was to remove the fountains. We were very excited when, at consent, it was approved. Again, we, I went back, I emailed all our tenants and our staff, and we were really happy, you know, that, that a solution had been proposed and accepted, and it seemed logical. So, imagine our huge disappointment when we heard in December that, no, as a matter of fact, even though at consent we had been told the removal of two existing planter fountains is acceptable, come back in two weeks with a star panel, pattern, and we're going to decide what happens there. We were told instead, no, after all, you're going to, you're going to be stuck with your fountains. So, I, I have listened, I, I wasn't at that hearing because I didn't know that that was even an option, but I've listened to the, the video over a couple of times and took some notes on some of the comments, and I still don't understand. I've listened to it over and over again. And so, I thought maybe if I showed you some of the comments, and I'm sure that you've probably listened to it as well, maybe that, it will give you some, some clarity, and that will help you as well. So, I've, I've got some pictures. I apologize, it's not as snazzy as Visit Santa Barbara's, and I've really limited them because the last thing I want to do is put pictures of an ugly situation in front of my hotel in the public. And, but I, I apologize because they're not happy pictures. The quality on some of them isn't good because my security manager's taking them at night, some, some of them. We've, we've been gathering them for years, so I've tried to weed them out so that you didn't have to look at a lot of them. I will just say that Hotel Santa Barbara is the original Barbara Hotel that, coincidentally, my husband's grandfather was the contractor on back in the 20s. And this is the state that it looked, that it was in in 1975 when my family bought it, because the area wasn't doing very well. We've made a lot of improvements and really enjoy running it as a boutique downtown hotel. And I guess my question is, did the commissioners only view pictures of the fountain when it was new in 2007? Or did they walk down there and look at the fountain at different times of the day or night and see what it really looks like? I don't, I don't think they could have seen it and said what they said in the comments that follow. And some of them I'll read to you, some of them I will just let you read. This says, "One of the character-defining features of, of State Street, one of its huge charms are these fountains. It's what makes Santa Barbara unique, and it's been copied, I don't know how many different cities in this country." I don't know how many different cities in this country. Another commissioner said, "I'm looking at these fountains. They're really beautiful. I find them quite attractive." This is a lovely piece of tile work. And I think it, it was, I think it really was, but I think the word should be was and not is. This is this week. "One thing after another gets yanked out, so that a law-abiding citizen, one of the pillars of the institutions, can't find a place to sit when I'm tired, when I'm walking down State Street to see what you people are up to." This picture was taken in 2015, so this has been going on for a while. And I, I, you asked about calls for service. We've logged them for years. You can't read it, because it's too small, but there are many, many, many calls. The police have been very responsive, but even they have asked me in emails and in person, "Have you been getting any traction getting the fountains taken out, so that people don't have to have, don't have such an easy place to congregate?" So, this is what our guests have to navigate when they come back from dinner. This is a quote from the video where Victor Garza explained that folks sit on the plants, they crush the plants, they put duffel bags on them, broken bottles, needles, and defecate and urinate. They're really a horrible mess, not serving their intended purpose. I don't think this is something the commissioners saw. This is what we see. And we believe that if the commissioners had viewed the fountains at different times of the day or night, that they would agree that even though they were once beautiful, it's time for them to go. Waiting is costly. When this was approved in November, we were excited, and then we went through the holidays, and then we went through another film festival where we're the hub. Two years in a row, we've been waiting since they were planted, two years of guests coming into the hotel for the film festival and walking out past all of that day and night. Our guests are talking. This is a letter that I received. "While your hotel and service were lovely, we unfortunately will not be able to return due to the filth and stench of State Street just steps from your business. We have also met other people who have shared their disappointment, and seemingly, seemingly recent decline of State Street in particular. Surely, the city of Santa Barbara can afford to support its businesses." This is just a sample. We, we get many letters like this. The press is talking. And the general fund is talking. So, this picture that was at the beginning, since that picture was taken in 2015, Hotel Santa Barbara has paid TOT payments to the city totaling $2,225 and $984. And without these problems, that would be much greater. I think what you, what you know, I know you know, is that what hurts us hurts you. And hotels are a little bit unique, because our money goes straight to the general fund, with 2% going to creeks. And so, if our revenue's down, that's just less that we have to give to you. "What was conceived to be a beautiful element becomes an ugly thing and a disruption to the orderliness of State Street." We, we agree with that comment by a commissioner. So, like I said, what hurts us hurts you, and I just ask that you please view this, think about the hotel as a partner. We think of the city as a partner. We have done everything we can to solve this problem. There's nothing more that we can do, and we ask for your help. And so, I'm just wondering if you've watched the video. I have several times. The discussion was good. There were questions. There were strong reasoned opinions about why the fountains should be removed. There were strong reasoned opinions about why they were beautiful and should stay. And there was also contradiction and contempt, and some of it was aimed directly at the city staff and other commissioners. I was blown away when I watched it. And I think, I just want to say on a personal note, I think it's a dangerous thing for personality to drive policy, and I think that's what happened at this hearing. Bullying isn't allowed on the playground anymore, and it certainly doesn't, doesn't belong in the city of Santa Barbara. So, I can't say whether my appeal is about that. If that's what turned the tide of the decision, if you watch the video again, I think maybe it was. Or if it's about commissioners just looking at old pictures of beautiful fountains when they were new, and not walking down and looking at what they saw, because I don't think they could have said it was beautiful if they'd seen its true state. We look at, you know, these great Visit Santa Barbara videos of the ideal Santa Barbara that we all want, but we live with the real Santa Barbara and the real issues on the street, and I think that's something that we just have to come to grips with, and there are things that we can do. Commissioners have so much power, and their, their decisions are costly to morale and to incentive for business people and to the bottom line, really costly. So, where does that leave me? You know, it leaves us with two ugly fountains that my guests and staff and our local friends that come downtown have to navigate, that we walk past many times every day. Since I've been asking for help, which I think was in 2015, 88,000 guests, guest room nights have been booked at the hotel. And if you figure there are two people in each room, you do the math, that's a lot of people just in our little hotel, walking past those fountains and having opinions like this. And, and so, I just wonder, did the commissioners look at them? Did you? Did you walk and look at them? If so, I hope you'll agree that they should not be considered for seating. They're not designed to be seats. They're not designed to be planters. They're not functioning well as planters. They were beautiful when they were first put in, but they don't, they don't belong anymore. They're broken, and they're ugly, and it's time for them to go. There are not many things that we can do in downtown Santa Barbara to solve the complicated issues that, you know, we, we hear about. You've been getting a lot of input from businesses about dealing with bureaucracies. This is a small thing that could be done, that would really impact that block, the 500 block. So, this is something that we can do. This is something that you can do, and I really hope that you will, and I appreciate your time and your attention.
You have 4:53 seconds.
I'm done. Your day has gone long.
You, you might, you might need them, so. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Erickson? Oh, she's there. Mr. Gutierrez, go ahead.
Would your security mind saying a few words about what it's like to work the door there?
Come on up, Keith. Keith has worked for us for 14 years.
Thank you.
Please state your name, sir, and...
Okay, my name's Keith. I've been at the hotel 14 years as security. I can tell you, those pictures there that Tamara showed, that's just a little bit of what, of what transpires at nighttime. During, during the day, I don't know about, but during the night, it's a complete different deal. I know a lot of you probably don't go out at night on the college night and on the weekends, but it becomes a different deal altogether. I mean, there is pot smoking going on heavily, where tourists and mothers with their strollers pass by, and they can't believe it. The, when the, the smoke goes into the hotel, when the doors are open, the smoking, drinking, cursing fights. I mean, I've seen fights because of that, because of the fountains from the people sitting there, that people have got their heads broken open, where the fire departments had to come and actually take out fire hose and clean up the sidewalk, because it's been so, so thick full of blood. I've called numerous, numerous times. Dispatch knows me on a first-name basis almost. The police officers know me. A lot of times, you know, they, they're busy, they don't have things to do. They have other things to do, but I call them constantly because of the, the cursing. On any Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, I challenge any of you to go out there and see what the real deal is. After 11 o'clock at night, it becomes a different, a different story altogether. Those pictures showed very little of what it actually gets people. It, it gets real bad.
Did you have any specific questions for this gentleman?
Thank you for, for keeping that part of the street safe. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you're, you're welcome, Oscar. And you're one of the few that I've seen out there. Like I said, I challenge any of you to go out after 11 o'clock on a Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and see what, what that, what those fountains turn into.
Thank you for your statement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Onzweata or Mr. Casey, do we have someone functioning as the applicant?
Yes, we do. We have a very brief applicant presentation. It's a little unique, in that we have the unbiased staff presentation on the appeal, kind of representing HLC staff, but then we're also the applicant as well. So, we'll just do a very brief applicant presentation at this point.
Ms. Buck? Thank you. I'll, let me set to 20 minutes. Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Heather Buck. I'm a project planner in the Transportation Planning and Parking Section of Public Works.
Can you get closer to that mic, please?
Yes, ma'am. Downtown Parking was the applicant, or is the applicant, for the fountain removal request on the 500 block of State Street. As you are aware, this, the fountains are located near the intersection of Coda and State Street. This is a view of the fountains flanking the entrance of the Hotel Santa Barbara. I'll, I'll move pretty quickly through this, because you've heard a lot of these points before. But the fountains were originally installed in 2007 with the State Street Sidewalk Improvement Project, and became non-operational in 2014 due to drought restrictions. In 2017, Downtown Parking received approval from the Historic Landmarks Commission to plant those for beautification and to continue to be in conformance with the drought restrictions. The existing fountains no longer serve their intended purpose. They're being used as tables for, and as seating, and this type of use has been damaging to the fountains. The plants are smashed and frequently need replacement. I talked with our maintenance staff, and they replaced them at least five times over a one-year period. Many tiles are broken and chipped, and Downtown Parking has even installed "Please Don't Sit Here" signs to try and discourage this type of misuse, but even these have been removed and damaged. There have been many calls for police service, over 130 in the last year, and at least 40% of those for loitering, camping, and related disturbances. Here's a couple of photos of the existing condition and use or misuse. So, this slide, I want to talk a little bit about Downtown Parking's role as the applicant, and how we have tried to address this situation over the past several years. Downtown Parking staff manages the maintenance of the State Street Plaza infrastructure, the Downtown Ambassador Program, on-street parking, Downtown Parking lots and garages, and serves as liaison to the Downtown Organization. In this role, we work with these groups to address public health and safety and maintenance issues in the downtown corridor. The two star-shaped fountains have been the subject of repeated maintenance, service, and policing requests. These have become an attractive nuisance. And so, after repeated attempts to address the ongoing public health and safety issues, as well as the deteriorating condition of the fountains, we proposed removal of the fountains in 2007, in November. You've seen the proposed solution, which is shown here. What we proposed was something that we felt was in keeping with existing elements already found in the paving palette along State Street. And actually, the image on the far right-hand side is actually just half a block down from Santa Barbara, Hotel Santa Barbara. This is a summary of a Historic Landmark Commission's determination, and I'm available to answer any questions that you might have for Downtown Parking as the applicant.
Are there any questions for Ms. Buck? I don't, I don't see any, so. But you've retained 16 minutes and 5 seconds, just in case. So, we'll go to public comment, and, okay. So, Bob Stout, are you still here? You'll be followed by Matt Libree. Ashley Hayes? Was, was that the young woman with the baby? She had to go? Oh, she's still here? Okay, so, go, go ahead. You have 3 minutes.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Miss Counsel. I don't know what's more impressive, Ms. Bjork's stop-action photo presentation, or Ms. Erickson's. They're both very, very enlightening. I'm speaking today as a business neighbor of Hotel Santa Barbara. I've been in the area three decades now. I was here when, before the sidewalks got bricked during that process, and then after, when the fountain came in, and I've just really seen the progression. I actually think the tile's beautiful, but the, you know, the fountains themselves have, they've just fallen into decay. I was surprised to hear they couldn't be moved. At first, I thought, well, that could be nice, but not if it took a real long time, like the bench that was by the habit, which was another example of something which years before was seen as an art, beautiful art thing, and later turned into just not something that was good for the neighborhood. So, speaking on behalf of, I think, most of the businesses around there, I totally support the, I think I got the language right, Ms. Erickson's appeal of the denial. So, that's all I have to say. I just, I've seen it for a long time, and it's just, there's no getting away from some of the problems. We can't beat the nuisance things back. We just don't have the resources to do that. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Libree?
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name is Matt Libree. We manage or involved in a number of properties on State Street, and I'm in support of the appellant, and the material that Ms., Mrs. Erickson shared is really compelling. But one thing I really appreciate, which I didn't think about until today, was Mr. Mahan's comment, that the real architectural resource is the hotel. And oftentimes, I think, well, it's in the name, HLC, and we often confuse or treat elements of our downtown as if they are landmarks. And this should be an easy decision for you all, and if you're not unanimous, I would, don't kill me afterwards, but I'd venture to say, if you really love the design, it could be incorporated into the Plaza at De La Guera, just an idea. But I appreciate Mr. Dayton's comments, too, that it's just not feasible to move these. And I think they haven't stood the test of time in numerous ways to become worthy to be moved. They, they were once an attractive design element, and, and maybe you can encourage staff to incorporate that somewhere else. I'm supportive of, of the appellant. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hayes? Ms. Hayes?
Hi, my name is Ashley Hayes, thanks for putting up with me and the baby. I just opened a new business, Asher Market, at 535 State Street, which my front door is directly across from one of these fountains. I've been open eleven days, and I've already noticed consistent traffic on the fountain. And if the fountain is full of people, then people tend to sit right in front of my window. I also have been amazed at both the police presence and the red coat people coming in, introducing themselves, and making sure that I have all the emergency numbers and non-emergency numbers, and I think that is amazing, it's a great resort, resource, but it also speaks to that there's a problem in this area, that there is so much help for me if there is an issue. I have my kids in the store, and on more than one occasion, I have felt unsafe with people hanging out at the fountain, and then also just right in front of my door. I also sell children's clothing, so I'm trying to attract people to bring their kids into my store. And I think the presence on the fountain is going to deter quite a few people from coming in. I notice that people will probably cross the street to avoid that area, which makes, that impacts my business directly, and then if they do pass by my store, and there's people congregating on the fountain, they're, they avert their eyes and just, you know, cross straight through, and that means that they also miss my window display and don't come into my business. I think I would just ask the city, this is my dream of opening a small business here, and I think that State Street really needs more businesses like mine. So if I could just ask you, instead of to choose small businesses over a dilapidated fountain?
Can I ask the name of your business?
Asher Market.
Say it again?
Asher Market.
And children's clothing?
Children's clothing, and I also design alpaca blankets and ponchos and scarves. You actually came to my booth at the night market.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Good to see you again. Ms. Harmon has a question for you.
Oh, perfect.
Not so much a question, I just want to say thank you for bringing your baby, and for everyone here, this is an aside, but children, families, I think I speak for everyone, are welcome in these chambers, and we're so grateful to have your baby as a part of this small, democratic process.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I do second that.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, no childcare, so he's taking a nap in your office.
Okay, well, very good. I don't see any other questions for you, thanks for your comments. We'll close public comment on this item, and before we go to deliberations, Ms. Erickson, you have four, four minutes if you want to close with anything?
No, I think you've heard enough.
Okay. And the applicant has more time, if there's any closing remarks?
No closing remarks.
Okay. And I didn't see who had their light on first, do, okay. I'll go with Mr. Gutierrez, Mr. Dominguez, and then Mr. Friedman, so, and then Mr. Rouse. Go ahead, Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I just have a question with the staff proposal of keeping that area still open. I'm just worried that even if we remove the fountain, that keeping it open would just, people will still come and sit down there. Is there any other proposals, other than to keep it still open like that?
We have discussed a couple of different options, some of those being paving, others being filling in a portion of that area with landscaping. But yes, it is, it is possible that that use could still occur. But again, in our role as kind of liaison to downtown organization, we would continue to monitor the situation and address if needed.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Gutierrez's question raises an issue that I want to make sure the council's aware of. Just by way of background, in April of 2015, the council altered the sit/lie ordinance specifically to apply to this fountain and to other street furniture. That doesn't preclude you from considering removing it, but you were aware of the problem at that time, and removing that planter doesn't make it any more illegal to sit there.
Understood. So, and then Ms. Buck, if I'm understanding correctly, you're, you're talking about flattening it out, there won't be anything to sit on. You understand that, right, Mr. Gutierrez? Okay.
That's, that's currently our proposal.
Okay, very good. And you're done, Mr. Gutierrez, with questions, or did you want to?
Oh, that was just for questions.
Okay.
I'll, I'll come back to me for my comments.
You, you want to come back, okay. Mr. Dominguez, then?
I move, we grant the appeal.
Okay. And that's a second for Mr. Rouse? And would you like to make comments to your motion?
I would like to, but I won't, because I think everything's been said, maybe just not by everyone, but I think it's been abundantly clear why this should be granted, so I'm not going to soapbox.
Okay. Mr. Rouse, you made a second, even though Mr. Friedman was higher on the list than you, but, okay. Everybody's polite. Mr. Rouse?
Just, I'll try to be brief, I, you know, this is so reminiscent, we went through with the brick bench, and Officer Corbett and I stood in front of HLC and the Arts Commission, had these very same discussions, and, and the commissions were concerned because it was a piece of art. Of course, the artist was unfortunately terminally ill at the time. But the, you know, we're not addressing a problem, we're addressing a symptom, we get that. And when they say this is not an appropriate response to the problem, all I can ask is, please tell me what is, and I, I actually am listening, I'm not being flippant, I don't know what the problem, how the problem is solved. We've patrolled, we've fenced, we've done all sorts of proactive things. Certainly, Mr. Garza and the Police Department have been on this thing, as was, as was just testified to. And it's hard, but architecture is meant to influence behavior, that's, that's why you design architecture, not just to look at, it's supposed to influence how you move, how you circulate, and what you do. And in some cases like this, it influenced it the wrong way, for whatever reason. So, it's not a, yeah, the, the biggest stakeholders to me, besides obviously the people who do business there, are the people who designed the thing and put it together in the first place, Mr. Mahan and, and Mr. Cunningham, and they've both come out in favor of removing these, these fountains, they're in disrepair, they look disgraceful. It's going to be, it's, I think the options that put up there by staff about the new design are fabulous. I'd say let's move forward.
Very good, Mr. Friedman?
Well, I will echo that and support the, the motion. I think it's quite interesting that, or coincidental, that today we had the Visit Santa Barbara presentation, and we see this, and how the, if we don't do our diligence, that we, we have a disconnect. So I think we're taking an appropriate step here to address the concerns of some of our most important downtown businesses. I will, for staff, because they are asking for findings. I appreciate Mr. Mahan coming forward, and specifically, I'll make the findings based on Santa Barbara Municipal Code 22.22.145B, Section 4, that there is an impact to an adjacent historic resource. And I will also include that there are health and safety issues for the public at large down there, and that's why I'm supporting the motion, thank you.
Does the motion maker and the seconder agree with his addition of the findings?
I'd just check in with the city attorney, is this process something that you think meets the code requirements?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez. What I was going to say is that as the maker of the motion, you've expressed in the past concern for our workload, this is a perfect one to accept Councilmember Friedman's finding, and then we will not come back with a resolution, we will be done by five today.
Perfect, then yes.
And yes?
Incorporate this into the motion.
For Mr. Rouse, did you have something to say, Mr. Casey? No, you had a look on your face. Mr. Gutierrez, are you ready to make your comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'm a supporter of the arts, and, and I appreciate the, the initial beauty of these fountains, but I would have to agree that that's not what they represent anymore, unfortunately. And I know it's a, a bigger issue, and this is just one little thing we're doing, but overall, I'm just worried about public safety, because I have walked those streets during the morning with the red shirts, and had to address an issue at that fountain, and also in the evenings where I've seen people fighting because they felt like it was their fountain to sit on. So, it's just, it's just a public safety issue, and I feel like, I feel like we've, we've got to take care of it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like Councilmember Dominguez, I won't belabor this point, because so many of the points were so well-made. But I will say this, it's so important to the work that we do trying to revitalize the State Street corridor, that we use every tool in our toolbox to support folks that are really there doing the work. And to me, this is one of those tools, so I will be supporting this motion as well.
Thank you. Did you have anything else, your lights on? I'll be supporting the motion as well. Not a whole lot was said about Mr. Cunningham's letter, but it was persuasive for me as the designer of the fountains. We also received several emails that I'd like to acknowledge from business owners along that stretch of State Street supporting removal of the fountains. I do respect the hotel as a building that needs acknowledgement of its historic value. But I would like to say that the Historic Landmarks Commission did their job, right? They, it was, it was a narrow charge, and they saw that the fountains were part of a streetscape that was beautiful at one time. So they, I, I think they did their job, but coming here, we have other things to consider, the safety of people who go through there, and I'm not such a square, I do go out at night, sir. And I have seen for myself after dark what goes on there. And so, we'll be, I'll be supporting the motion, and we should have a roll call vote, because this is an appeal. Madam Clerk, if you're ready. And the motion is, do we need to reread it, Mr. Casey? To uphold the appeal? Reflective of the, go ahead.
The motion was to uphold the appeal with the reflection of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code mentioned by Friedman, but I did not catch the number.
Madam Mayor, we typically review the minutes with the clerk's office. The, the Councilmember Friedman said approved finding four from 22.22.145B, as in Bravo, and the statement was that the design of the removed fountain is appropriately sensitive to the adjacent potential resource, which is the Hotel Santa Barbara itself.
And he also made a, a comment toward public safety, and is that one of the findings? But that'll just be part of the record, then. Are we ready for the, for the roll call? Thank you.
Mayor Protem Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon? Yes. Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sneddon? Excuse me. Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
And Mayor Maria?
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for participating in this process. Okay, okay. We discourage clapping and booing, so we'll close this item. What is next, I think, is our reports to the council on our committee assignments and activities that we've been partaking in. I don't see any lights, so, oh, there, Ms. Harmon, if you're ready to go.
Excuse me, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, along with many others up here, attended the League of Cities Dinner on Friday evening. On Saturday, I attended the Plaza de la Guerra Planning Workshop, again, with a number of others up here. That was very well-attended, as we heard earlier. Finally, I was a judge for the Impact Hub Seed Spot Social Entrepreneurship Pitch Night on Saturday night, and it was really inspiring, a lot of people with really good ideas, and I hope that we'll see some of them doing work here in our city soon.
Very good. Mr. Friedman?
I too attended the Liga Cities Channel Cities Dinner, and it was hosted by the Carpinteria, City Carpinteria, so it was a great event, and most of my colleagues were there. It was great to see you and other members from throughout the tri-counties.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the restriping of Cabrillo Boulevard Workshop, and with Councilmember Sneddon, and it was a really good turnout, and it was, I feel like it was very productive. A lot of the community members were able to speak with staff and go over the plans, and I felt like it was very productive. I also attended the Liga Cities Dinner in Carpinteria, which was really educational and a good way to meet other city officials. And I also was able to briefly stop by at the Drag Race on Cabrillo Boulevard on Friday, which was really cool, to see all those hot rods, and a great event for the community and the city overall. Thank you.
Mr. Dominguez?
I also was at the League event, the car show. I attended the Board of Directors meeting for the Housing Authority, and I was up in Sacramento and lobbying assembly people and senators on local control, trying to bring some of the control back to cities, particularly cities like ours that have a sensitive ecosystem and are built out.
Mr. Rouse? Oh, you're good.
It's already been reported, thank you.
Okay. I attended the Coast Rail Coordinating Council, which is a subcommittee of SB CAG. I was voted in as vice chair, and we have formed the, a formal joint powers authority with the transportation agencies from Santa Cruz to Ventura, and we may be able to secure some grants with this amazing goal of actually acquiring the Central Coast Rail Corridor from Union Pacific. That's how I, how high that we are aiming with that particular group. The big news was that our, our agency secured $650,000 in grants to fund planning to improve services in the corridor. So that's passenger rail on the Central Coast, which would really benefit Santa Barbara, especially to increase train service going north of here. There's only one train, the Starlight, that takes you northbound. I also attended the Sister Cities Board Meeting, we have very active groups. The Dingle Ireland Group is having a dinner tomorrow night. Patrisse Group is celebrating Greek Independence Day on March 23rd. And then the group itself is looking at ways that they process requests when people want to suggest a new sister-city relationship with Santa Barbara. It's kind of a big, it's a big deal. So I have all their dinners and stuff, I'll, if you all want to go to those events, they're usually very nice. I attended the downtown Santa Barbara Board Meeting today, and there was nothing out of the ordinary, a lot of talk about safety, planning, and of course, last week, we approved their assessment program. So we'll close our reports and go to a closed session. What's, what's that topic, Ms. Clerk?
Item number nine, subject: Conference with city attorney, existing litigation, as described in Agenda Item Number Nine.
Okay, and we won't make a report back, so we will adjourn to closed session.